Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this session of Quispamsis Council on June the 18th of 2024. May I have an approval of the agenda, please? Moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Donovan. On the question, please vote now. Motion, carrot, seven, zero. The treaty acknowledgement, a moment of reflection, please. Counselor Miller.
Thank you, your worship. We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Quispamsis... Everything's off, okay? Do you want me to...
...exists on the traditional territory of Williswick, Malacita, and Mickmac people, whose ancestors, along with the Pascoquoddy tribe, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 17th...
With respect to the elders, past and present, and to the descendants of this traditional territory, and may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. May we make good decisions without prejudice or bias and always in the best interest of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. I have a few remarks this evening, and I would like to begin by recognizing that June is Pride Month, and we in the town of Quispamsis join people from our community, our province, and our country in celebrating pride. It's a time of sharing and for understanding. It is also important for us to continue to acknowledge and learn more about ourselves, our families, members, friends, and neighbors that make up this community and add so much to our daily lives. Quispamsis is an inclusive community, and you are welcome and safe here. We are proud to share our lives with you. It is the last week of the school year in our region, and I want to congratulate our local graduates and students on another successful academic year. I am excited to be participating in this year's Kennicase Valley High School graduation ceremonies coming up tomorrow at the Qplex. It's so rewarding to see our leaders of tomorrow taking such an important step in their lives. The end of school means more young people will be visiting our parks, playgrounds, and public areas and walking along our streets. I'd like to remind motorists to please take extra care on the roadways with more people out enjoying the warm weather and the amenities that Quispamsis has to offer. These amenities include the 97.3, the wave pool, and the Firefly splash pad, which are both now open for the season, so hopefully they'll get lots of use tomorrow. The pool is open daily with member tuning, free, and public swims. And on the homepage, click the link for public schedules to find our pool hours. The splash pad is open daily from 10:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. Parking is just a short walk away at 15 Equity Lane... Equality Lane, I'm sorry, next to the Wheels and Ramp Skateboard Park at the Comex Bus Stop. Menin's Cove Beach is also officially opening this weekend. We are excited to help you stay cool and have a fun and safe summer. The East Coast Games are back in our region this weekend. About 2,000 athletes from Atlantic Canada will participate in various competitions between Friday and Sunday. I will be away for this wonderful event, but extend a warm thank you to all of the volunteers, and best of luck for success and fun to all of the athletes. Quispamsis is co-hosting the U-13 and U-17 softball tournaments and various swimming events. We are very excited to have the East Coast Games included here in Quispamsis, and we welcome all visitors to our region this weekend. Come celebrate Canada Day with us here in Quispamsis. Our Canada Day activities are from 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. at the Arts and Culture Park just outside the municipal building here. This year's events will have a thrilling pirate theme and giant inflatables: axe throwing, a foam pit, tasty treats, prizes, live music, and much, much more. It's free for all ages to enjoy. Kennicase's Valley food basket contributions will also be accepted on Canada Day at our Canada Day event. Also, note that our Arts and Culture Park Summer Series events will begin on July the 5th. You can find the schedule for movies, music, and movement in the park on our website at quispamsis.ca or our Facebook page. We are now in the second week of the Town of Quispamsis 2024 Street Upgrades Program. Work has begun on several roadways identified for upgrades over the last two years, as the town did not have street upgrades last summer. Our staff and contractors are working very hard to make these streets safer for everyone in our community. Motors can expect, without exception, some delays during the construction work. So you can track the roadway online by visiting quispamsis.ca. On the homepage, scroll down to the News and Notices section and click View All. While there, you can subscribe to receive road and construction updates by email. The Street Upgrades Program is expected to continue through to the end of September, so please try your patience out. I was on the Hampton Road last year, two years ago, I guess, and there were employees that were out there working in the hot, hot sun, and some drivers were really unacceptably rude, and I just hope that people will see that we are trying to make Quispamsis a safe and better place for everyone. So before you begin any of your home improvement projects this summer, ask yourself if you need a permit to do so, to do the work, because our permit system is now exclusively online, and you can access it at quispamsis.ca under the Building and Development menu. Please keep in mind, any grass clippings must be removed from roadways and sidewalks. Before I conclude my remarks, I would like to offer my condolences on behalf of the Town of Quispamsis to the family of Alan Kelly, who passed away in late May. Mr. Kelly was the first mayor of Quispamsis from 1966 to 1968 and helped lay the foundation for what you see before you today. And lastly, Friday, July 5th, is National Injury Prevention Day. According to advocacy group Parachute, injury is the number one cause of death in Canadians aged 1 to 44, and injuries cost the Canadian economy more than $29 billion every year. In recognition of National Injury Prevention Day, the outside of the Quispamsis Town Hall will be lit with green lights on July 5th to help promote injury prevention. Moving on, I am looking for a disclosure of interest this evening. Seeing there are none, I will move on to presentations. This evening, we have KV Oasis' presentation on our youth center. In attendance, we have Danielle Robertson-Lee, who is the program director. Welcome, Danielle.
Hello. I didn't declare that I was bringing anybody else, but I am going to welcome up Kelly McIntyre and Cory Ross, if that is okay. They are the Chair and Vice Chair of the Board for KV Oasis.
Absolutely. Kelly and Cory, welcome. And if you'd like to come up, if you have anything to add to Danielle's presentation, you can either wait for her to sit down, or you may come up.
They're coming up.
And Kelly, you have been working hard on this new building. Danielle, perhaps you could introduce Cory's position and what Kelly has offered to the Oasis.
Yeah, so Cory Ross is the Chair of the Board of Directors for KV Oasis. Her and Kelly McIntyre, the Vice Chair of the Board of Director for KV Oasis, have been heavily involved in our transformation and our rebrand. So I welcomed them both today, so that if there were any questions or anything that they thought they could add, I just thought that they would be really important to have here, and that way, if I miss anything, they can kind of cover it and back me up a little. But I will move into it. I know that I only have limited time. I am here just to kind of educate everybody on the new brand, rebrand of KV Oasis. I have had the opportunity to talk to some of you and introduce you to the space and kind of what we've been up to and what's new with KV Oasis, but I wanted to come here tonight so that I could make sure that everybody kind of was in the know and was updated on what's been going on. So I do want to start with who I am. I'm Danielle Robertson. I'm actually now Danielle Lee. I just changed my name because I got married last September. But Danielle Robertson is how most people know me. I am the Program Director of KV Oasis. I took the Child and Youth Care with Addiction Support Worker Program at Eastern College, where I then graduated and became a family support worker. I worked in the child protection sector for a small business that's contracted out by social development, and I worked there for two years, where I mentored kids, I supervised visits, I worked with challenging behaviors, I did parent aid and parent coaching. So I was heavily involved with working with youth and their families, which brought a lot of experience to my knowledge and added to my education. I have assist training and nonviolent crisis intervention training, and on top of all that, I've been a dance instructor in the Kennicase Valley for over 12 years, which has given me added education and experience with youth and their families. So an update on our mission and our commitment. Our new mission at KV Oasis is to empower and inspire the next generation by fostering confidence, providing essential mental health support, imparting crucial life skills, and actively engaging in crime prevention initiatives. Our commitment is we are committed to creating a safe and inclusive environment where young individuals can discover their strengths, build resilience, and develop the skills necessary for a successful transition into adulthood. Through innovative programs and dedicated mentorship, we aim to shape responsible, confident, and socially conscious members of the community, ultimately contributing to a brighter future for all. We have four new main priorities at KV Oasis. They are building confidence, mental health and addiction support, general life skills, and crime prevention. So as you can see, we have a really good relationship with the KRPF. There's some of our friends back there as well. But I have been arguing that all of the skills that we are able to foster in youth and in their families and all of the programs we can bring kind of fit under the umbrella of crime prevention. I think that if we can teach a kid one thing, then we are guiding them in a better path or on a better path to be more successful and better contributors to our community. Those are our four main priorities. We are no longer a drop-in center or a hangout space, so you can't come and go as you please. We are a program, services, and resource-based center. It doesn't mean that if you need a quiet space to come and hang out or if you send me a message and say, hey, can a couple of my friends come and just study for a bit or play games on our phone in the space? Can we do that? Absolutely, we would let you. You just can't come and go as you please anymore. It just, it became something that it was never meant to be when it was a drop-in center, and we just think that we can benefit the community and their families way better this way. So some of our programming, we have multiple categories: early intervention programs, recreational and enrichment activities, youth leadership, school-based programs, community outreach and education, conflict resolution training, restorative justice programs, engagement with law enforcement, mentorship programs, family support services, and data-driven approaches. So in saying all of that, that's a lot to take in, but I wanted to kind of paint a picture of what we've already been doing. We've only been open technically since the end of May. We're June 18th today, so just under a month. And we've already been in the schools, working with staff and students. I've done presentations at multiple schools. I was at QMS a few weeks ago for their Freeze Out campaign. If you're not familiar with it, they pick a new topic every year to freeze out, and this year it was body shaming attached to body positivity. So I was able to go and do a presentation at QMS, talk to the students, get to know some of them, talk on my own personal experiences. And then at the end of the week, at the end of the month, I guess, they all had a bracelet that was meant to start up conversations. You had to present your bracelet still on your wrist. They cut it off, and then you get a jumbo freezy, which was a pretty good deal, but I got to partake in that. I've also been in the elementary schools recently. I did, I launched a kindness bingo, so it was sent out to all the elementary schools, and certain ones could participate if they had the time and wanted to. And it was based on however many kindness points you got. So I created a bingo card, and all of the kids had the opportunity to complete different tasks. And some of them were as, I wouldn't call them difficult, but took more time-consuming as write, like your whole class had to write letters to people in special care homes. Then there was also things as like give somebody a high five. So it's very inclusive, but just encouraging kindness throughout the ages K to 5. And then the school that won all of the kindness points or the most kindness points got a pizza party. So shout out to Fairville because they won the kindness bingo, and they are getting pizza party on Friday. We have a strength training program that's operating every Monday. It's a 45-minute program. It's with Cheryl Moore. We have a group of 10 consistent people coming to the class. They come, they do exercise, they socialize. It's really great for building their confidence, obviously their strength, but also just social skills and social interactions. We have a leadership program that we're starting up in September, but we had the kickoff the night of our grand opening, and we again had, I think, like 15 people and their parents in attendance to learn about the program we were going to be offering and a little bit more about KV Oasis. I have also received over five referrals from the police force now to work with youth in a mentorship capacity with my education and my experience. I have the ability to work with youth on setting boundaries, learning about healthy relationships, work through challenging behaviors, just kind of, the list goes on. I've worked with youth and their families, so I have done some parent aid and parent coaching, which has been really awesome. And something that Kelly can actually speak to a little bit is kind of the results of the referrals. So I've gotten the referrals, I've worked with the youth and their families, and Kelly has been able to see the other side of it and how it's been working out for them. So if you want to speak to that, step on up to the mic.
So Danielle's been a wonderful resource for us already. I feel that she's really bridged the gap for us. A lot of times when we're dealing with youth, we're finding that if they're in crisis, then there's a huge gap to get them into some sort of counseling facility, and the parents are in crisis as well. So Danielle's been able to really bridge that gap. So an example, a few weeks ago, we had a case that we dealt with. I would suggest that it was high risk. It was going to take this youth and their parents two months to get into counseling. There was no programs offered, no support. So what happens with us is we end up receiving more calls. So we had Danielle come in, work with the youth. We brought the youth to the center with their families, and the calls stopped immediately. And they're continuously working with Danielle. So this has been a huge benefit for us. I will tell you that Danielle, I've had to speak to her a little bit about not working too much. I had one day that she worked about 14 hours straight, but she's very committed, very dedicated. KV Oasis is a lot different than what it used to be. I worked with KV Oasis when we were down on Petengale, and it was this drop-in center, and it just didn't work for this community. And in order for us to move ahead and move ahead with the process we're in now, I spent a lot of time out in the community, speaking with, you know, all sorts of people: schools, healthcare providers, people from our priority neighborhoods, obviously, you know, your worship, different, all sorts of different people to come up with this idea of what this center would look like. So when we built in these priorities, they weren't just something that we just came up with, you know, out of nowhere. They were very purposeful, and if you come down to the center, you'll see that everything we have done there is very strategic. And I think it's going to be a big success. I'm pretty pleased with the results so far.
Thanks. Awesome. So to continue on that, we have met with various partners in the community. We're going to offer a financial literacy course that will be ongoing for different age groups based on certain skills that people think that they might need to be, might need to be built. I've had presentations at social development. I have a partnership with the Kennicase's Regional Police Force. We just announced that we're going to be offering the Babysitting and Home Alone Course again, partnering with First Aid Medic, and there's just so much more. But one thing that I would really encourage everybody here and everybody that's watching to do is to stop by to see our space. We are at 221 Hampton Road, and I do have some images up here. But that's, yeah, so images are nice, but it would be really nice if you could come see them in person. So that's our entrance. That's what you see when you first walk in. And then that's kind of our welcoming lobby area with the couches. That's where I tend to meet a lot of clients. It's just comfortable, homey. It makes them feel more comfortable and at ease to talk to me. That is our main space where we offer programming. All of the tables can be moved. There's a giant TV for people to do presentations on. We have an office space at the back. That's my office in the front area again. And then at the very back, we have another office space with the dark blue chairs. And we use that space too. So for example, Hestia House, we're planning to partner with them. They're going to come out and use the space once a week to do domestic violence outreach and offer referrals and just education on that. But we also have probation officers who want to use it as a more confident, less triggering space for youth to come and meet. So it's really just a multi-purpose room that we want to encourage people to come out and use so that the space is being used the way that it needs to. We rent it out for free. It's a space that we want to give back to the community, and we understand that the space is limited, but we also think that it's effective. And that is it, and I am out of time.
Thank you very much, and I have to say, as a former educator, we can't stress enough how important it is to set our youth on the right path. And I think you've got a very unique concept here, and I really believe that it's going to be tremendously helpful to many, many youth and to their families because you've taken away the element of a drop-in center where kids are playing games or ping pong or whatever, and you've opened that up to say, what do you need? And we are going to provide it in the form of a program. And I was extremely impressed when I had my tour and my, you know, my visit with you. So thank you for what you were doing. I think it's extremely valuable.
Thank you very much.
I will go to Counselor Luck.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to thank you. This is so wonderful. So kudos. I was involved with Oasis when it was, you know, first in its infancy stage way back when, and I think some of the things you're doing was kind of the vision or the hope. So I'm so pleased to see that it's come to fruition, so congratulations on all your hard work. It's absolutely wonderful as an occupational therapist. Just what you're doing in terms of life skills with youth is so critical in, you know, in this demographic, so just want to thank you for that. I will make the motion that counsel thank Danielle Robertson and her colleagues for her information or informative presentation on the KV Oasis Youth and Family Support Services.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Luck and seconded by Counselor Bigger. On the question, on the question, I see that, not to worry. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Yes, thank you, Danielle. Thank you for the presentation. I've been ill, so I haven't been down to see you yet, but will be. I will be coming down to see you. I'm interested in the mental health and addiction support. Who, I know for, to find a child psychologist, there's like months and months wait times for that. So I'm wondering who you're partnering with that to provide these services to the youth?
Yeah, so one person that we have partnered with and have secured, I guess is the best way to put it, would be Mary McKinnon. So she works closely with the St. John Police Force and the Kennicase's Regional Police Force, but she is mobile mental health. But she, so she has years of experience. She's really wonderful to work with. But she will be coming in and offering info sessions for parents and youth separately, support in that sense too. I also, as far as mental health and addictions, I do have education on that, and I do have experience with that. So as Kelly was saying earlier, to bridge that gap, I am offering it in a mentorship capacity, but youth and families can come and meet with me, and I can almost be like a positive role model that they can talk to and that they might talk to about things that they might not necessarily feel confident talking to anybody else about, and then I can help them navigate in that sense. We are hoping to reach out to somebody, to find somebody to come in and offer pro bono counseling, use the space that we have at the back. I think it would be really beneficial to the community, but it would be nice even if it was like a drop-in for half a day. But we also have some funding there too that we could put into that if we needed to. But that's kind of the track that we're on right now. That answers your question?
Thank you very much. Yes, it does answer my question because I sit on the committee for, under the Regional Service Committee for Community Development, and some of these programs here would fall under our mandate. So I'll share all your information with the Board or the Committee for the new Regional Service Commission.
Perfect. I do have business cards. I can leave to somebody if they want them.
You may have the template, Danielle. Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Danielle and ladies, for your presentation. And I'm really glad that you were able to be here. I really appreciated the insight I gained from the lunch and learn that I was able to get to. That was great. And I appreciate the deputy mayor's questioning on the mental health support, and that gives you a chance to, I think, shine in terms of what you do well. And I also appreciated, I think, you had made mention of the, you know, striking key partnerships with other care professionals, and so of course, you're liaising with them. I just wanted to say congratulations. I think that you've got a marvelous team here surrounding you. The support of the KRPF is excellent. And again, from the event that I was at, I can see that there is a strong commitment by the police force to support. I like your concept of crime prevention, these supports all kind of in a practical fashion or crime prevention, and I think that's a really important sentiment. And I think that, I just wanted to say that, you know, it's a great-looking location. You've got wonderful programs, and you've got some marvelous sort of priorities that you've put before you. But that's all driven by good people, and I think that that's most of all what I'm observing. The more I watch, I scour the website. I'm impressed with everything I see, but mostly, I'm impressed with good people, and I think that that's what we have on our hands here. So I just wanted to point that out and say thank you very much, and that goes for the whole teams.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, I could not do it without the whole team. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Counselor Miller, please.
Again, thank you very much for the presentation. It's quite enlightening, actually, when you talk about, and you gave the example of how you expedited some of the situations where before it would take months to try to go through the system. So I think that's well-needed for everybody in the community. And on that, and a little bit to what's just been asked is, could you maybe quickly just state, because I mean, obviously, you've changed the whole concept of what it was before, and I think it's a great change. Kind of what your staffing looked like before versus what your staffing looks like now? I know you're trying to second a few people and things like that, but as far as the overall structure of your group?
Yes, so I can't speak to exactly how many staff were before. I only took on the role at the end of January, beginning of February. It is something that perhaps Cory could speak to, but I can speak to now, and I can tell you that I am the sole staff at KV Oasis right now. I have amazing support from the board. Like I said, like I really couldn't do it without them, but I am the sole staff at KV Oasis now. But Cory can speak to the staffing situation prior to that.
Yeah, so prior, because we were a drop-in center, we always had to have, sorry, any better? Because we were the drop-in center before, we had to have a minimum of two staff for the entire duration of the shift as well. We had an executive director that was there full-time. So it was not something feasible that we could maintain. You would have days that there would only be two kids come in, but you had to staff and pay two staff members. So by removing the drop-in feature, and we've got it with Danielle, who's currently running everything to kind of get everything up and running, it allows us to significantly reduce our costs, not only with rent, but also with the salary. So it's much more sustainable, and I think we're all very proud to see what we're able to accomplish with a smaller, very focused, good people.
Counselor Miller, anything else? Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to share some information with you. It's a good presentation. I was at Federation of Canadian Municipalities last week, and that's where all of the movers and shakers come from right across Canada. There was 3,100 delegates. And one of the things that I picked up was this brochure I'm going to give you. It's called a PACT, a Peer-Assisted Care Team, PACT Model. And you have a team that addresses situations that are assessed by one of the teams, and they take along somebody with mental health background, a care person, and they review it all. And it's quite a, it's quite a, it's quite a process. In Montreal, they've got a $50 million budget. And they've got 10 vehicles. They recently just added two more vehicles, but they've got 10 vehicles that goes out into the community. This brochure here is from B.C., but I thought I'd give it to you. It'll give you some ideas and contact information that you can share with them. And so I'll just give that to you, okay? But it's, you're on the right track because mental health is a big issue that... that, that we're dealing with nowadays. And when you get, when you get information like that out to the general public, your volunteers are going to come out of the woodwork.
Yes.
Because they have the same passion as you have, and it'll all help. So anyway, just to share that with you and good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor Olson. Councilor Donovan, please.
Thank you. It was a wonderful presentation. I'm glad to hear that you guys are heading in the, the right direction or a better direction. I often say, you know, great minds think alike because I was also at that FCM conference with Councilor Olson, and I had a chance to actually explore one of the City of Calgary's community centers. And I would argue that you, what the model that you have is far better than the City of Calgary's, and they, again, would have a massive budget. But I also did pick, I don't have it with me tonight, but I did pick up some information for you that maybe you could take bits and pieces. But it seems like they're also heading in the same direction of moving away from that traditional drop-in center, and they're kind of evolving with the times and offering more services to the community. So I, I really think that's the better direction for you guys, and I'm very glad that you're here to help our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your presentation this evening and for being here, and I think we're going to be on the road to creating wonderful new citizens as they grow up in our communities, both here and in Rossay. So thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
And we have a motion. A motion on the table on the question, please. Please vote now. Councilor Luck and Councilor Miller, please. Motion carried seven zero. Thank you very much. Have a good rest of your evening. Item 5B, 2023 Financial Audit Presentation. In attendance, we have Peter Logan, CPA, CA, partner of Teed, Saunders and Doyle Company. Welcome, Mr. Logan. Nice to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. This is probably the, circle this in the calendar every year, the most exciting meeting when the auditor comes. Yeah. Just what you need to keep you awake when it's 85 degrees. Yeah, so my name's Peter Logan. I'm a partner at Teed, Saunders, Doyle, and KV Oasis are clients of ours, actually, so it all fits together. And so we, basically, our job is, as the auditors, the independent auditors, is to look at the town's records. We come in onsite for about a week and prepare our, do our testing and talk to people and drive Krista crazy for the most part. And then once we're done, the next page is our auditor's report. So we issue the independent auditor's report, which just basically indicates that our, we found that the town's records were in compliance with Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. So those are the standards that municipalities are required to follow. That came in around 2012, I think, is when everybody switched from municipal accounting to the Canadian Public Sector Accounting. So that is what we call a clean audit opinion. We should note as well that we preface this, these are consolidated financial statements. So what that means is that the, the town's share of the police, the fire and the library are, those results are included in these financial statements. And it's roughly 60/40. 60% is QuisPam, 40% would be Rossay. The next page to look at would be page number three, and that is our consolidated statement of operations. So this shows sort of the 12 months' worth of activity for 2023. Revenue this year, so property tax warrant, that's the top line there, that was just over 29 million compared to 26,500,000 last year. Overall, the town's total revenues in 2023 were 37,234,000, so up from the previous year. As far as expenses go, you can see total, so those expenditures, those categories are pretty much a format for municipal audits. So we've got general government services, protective, your transportation, environmental health, environmental development, and your community services as well. Community would be another word for recreation, and then utilities. So that's your water and sewer. So expenses this year total were at 33,345,000. So when we take that off of the total revenue of 37,234,000, there was a surplus this year of 3.888 million dollars. Should be noted with that surplus, so under public sector accounting standards, and every year the town applies for capital grants through the various either provincial or federal funding. So under revenue, this year there was one point under conditional government transfers, there was about 1.847 million received during the year. Now that would be for capital projects, which you would have paid this year in 2023. We have to show those grants as income in the year that you get them. So it does provide a bit of a mismatch because the capital projects that you're funding with these grants, you're going to amortize those off over a number of years. So you recognize the expense over a period of years, but the related revenue comes in and it has to be shown as revenue the year you get it. So that surplus number, it really isn't an excess. It's more, you've got some things that came in for grants. We have to put it all in as revenue, and that's typical for most towns who have a lot of capital grants coming in. You do see, under public sector, you do see surpluses. We also look at the municipal, so under the old way or the municipal accounting way, it's more of a cash system. So when you prepare your budgets in the fall, that's something that you look at is, you know, what is our long, what is our debt repayment going to be? What is our, you know, operating, how much are we going to be buying in capital from our operating fund? So in that situation, your funding surplus this year in the general fund was 56,168 dollars, and in your utility fund it was 15,510 dollars. So that's the funding surpluses. And you can see there that at the bottom of that, your accumulated surplus within the town is 103,111 dollars. And so what that is quickly, if we look on page four, this is the consolidated statement of financial position. So this shows down at the bottom, you've got your accumulated surplus is 103,111. So what that is, that's the excess of your, your assets over your liabilities. So really what it is, in the town, the non-financial assets, those are your capital. So your capital assets, they have, they're on the books at 211,615,000. An amortization to date is 94,38,000. So the net of those is sort of the equity that you have in the town's assets at 117. So that 103 million dollar surplus, that is really the, it's, it's your assets. It's the tangible capital assets in there. A couple of other points too. We also look at the, the debt. So under municipal guidelines, so debt service ratio, so what that is, is that's just a calculation we look at. It's a percentage of your interest payments and your principal payments on debt as, as a percentage of your total expenses. So in your general fund, that number is at 6.4%. And in the utility, it's at 24.6%. That's your debt service. So the guidelines from the province in your general fund, they don't want to see a debt service getting up near 20, so 20% is kind of the roof. So at 6.4, you're well underneath. And then your utility fund, the, the ceiling is 20, is 50%. So you're at 24.6. So again, you're, you're within the, within that, well underneath the limit. This year there was one new debenture brought in for 600,000. And part of your capital as well is funded through your reserve funds. And this year, the reserve funds, there was a net decrease in reserve funds of about 302,000. So that's basically the money that went in minus the money that went out to pay for some capital projects. So they went down by 302,000. And that's kind of it. We had a, I guess, a longer meeting last week when we met with finance to kind of go through these in a lot more detail. So tonight's presentation is kind of more of a, of a higher level overview, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to, to answer them or attempt to.
I will open the floor for anyone who has a question. Councilor Miller.
Thank you, your worship. I don't have any extra questions. I just want to make a comment to, to thank you and your staff, you and your team, but also our town staff as well, but also the entities that also deal, that we deal with internally, whether it's police, fire and the library. So having everybody on the same accounting makes it much better. So thank you to our staff for, I know it's her most favorite time of the year, budgeting, and I think this might be the second, though not the, not the first.
No, for sure, yeah.
But thank you for all your hard work, and again, I've been here a long time and a lot of people, we've seen these numbers many, many times. So when you talk about public sector versus the other thing, the big thing is we had like a $56,000 surplus, not a 3.88 million, so. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'd like to thank Krista as well and her staff. I know this year was a bit challenging, so, but at the end of the day, well, we got it done and very few adjustments, so that's also good.
If I may remove myself from the chair for a moment, I do have a question. Quite often the discussion flows to reserve funds, and I know that they're important for us to have. So for a municipality with a 35, 36 million dollar budget, do you have any idea what would be suitable for a reserve fund? Is it 100,000? Is it?
It's, it just differs. I mean, it's, it, it would just depend on, because reserve fund is really going to be from an operation, you have an operating reserve, which is going to cover anything that, any expenses that are surprises or maybe unbudgeted. The big one though, the bulk of the reserves are in your capital. So really it just depends on your, whatever your particular plan is, looking out over five years, looking ahead to see what kind of capital projects you're going to be and how much you want to sort of set aside for those. So really it's, it depends on what, what's happening.
So it would be driven more by our strategic plan and our asset management, looking out over five and 10-year increments?
Yeah, yeah, it just, yeah, because, because you may have cases where if you know down the road you're going to have a bigger project coming, so you may, you know, build up the reserves over a period of time, then all of a sudden drop, you know, take them out to do the project. So you're, you're, you know, that balance is going to jump up and down depending really what it is that you're, that you're going to be working on.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. My question is on the debt service ratio. I, I believe you said our debt service ratio is 6.4 or 6.5.
Yep.
So if we were to endeavor on a large project and that debt's service ratio increased, what would you say would be a ceiling or a recommended ceiling? I know the province says we can't go over 20.
That's the ceiling.
But that's the ceiling.
That's the ceiling, yeah.
So there, as far as other municipalities, you have any idea of where they're at with debt service ratios? Where we sit?
Yeah, I mean, they're all different. It just depends on, and normally, obviously, when you have a newer, big project, the first few years, that service ratio will go up if you've got, if you're taking on new debt for that. So it really just depends on what, what they have. I mean, for the most part, we do a few municipal audits. You know, and I don't think we get too many that go over 10.
Okay.
But that's not a rule of thumb. 20 is kind of it. So, but you may have a case where you may be up over that depending on what it is you're, yeah, what you're building.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilor Miller, your light was on.
Yep, I was going to make a motion if there's no more questions.
Go ahead, we can always go to the question.
Perfect. I would move the council accept the proposed 2023 audit of financial statements as presented by Teed, Saunders, Doyle and Company by Mr. Logan.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilor Miller, seconded by Councilor Thompson. On the question? There are none. Please vote now. Motion carried seven zero. Thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you.
And thank you to our finance team here as well. So thanks very much.
Thank you.
Item 5B, sorry, 5C, Kind of Cases Regional Police Board of Police Commissioners, verbal update on the new building expansion. In attendance, we have the Chair, Mr. Kevin Darling, Chief Steve Gordo, and Deputy Chief Mary Henderson. Welcome, everyone. You may begin.
Deputy Mayor, members of council and members of the staff. If, if this works for you, I, I would like to provide you a brief verbal update of where we are with our construction budget or construction project. Mr. Darling, the Chair of the Board of Police Commissioners, I can provide you with specific numbers. And then Acting Deputy Chief Henderson is here to answer any policing questions you may have. She has all the answers. And please excuse if you happen to notice a, a sign of nervousness on my forehead developing. It's a little bit warm. So we did tender the project and received or awarded a tender back in April, mid-April, and we were very proud to award tender to a local valley company, and the relationship with the builders has been excellent. The project was a little bit late to start because of some last-minute insurance obligations that we became aware of, but the project has started and is following the timeline that we, we had put in place. You may recall, your worship, that back in November 2023, I had sent a letter to council to explain how we would monitor the project, how we would monitor the budget allocated to project and the expenditures. So we have awarded another tender to a project manager, Mr. Kelly Peters, a very competent individual. He's been a great addition to the project, and he is providing us updates along with the builders every two weeks in person. We just had the very first update two weeks ago. We have another one tomorrow. Everything is, is on schedule as far as the timelines as well as the budget itself. We also had indicated in the letter that we would provide bi-weekly updates internally with our finance and building committees from the board, and that we would provide monthly updates to the board, and we're also going to provide with that on our minutes or in some other fashion that you may ask for, monthly updates to the council about how the project is unfolding. There were some little additions to the original project. Those were additions in relations to insulation to be more efficient. We had looked at that expense when the project was first crafted. However, we were a little bit concerned about the cost, so we had put that aside, and once we became aware that our tender came far below what we expected, we re-added those energy efficiencies. We also did the same thing with the lighting to, for long-term efficiency and reducing costs for our consumption. And there's also some pricing efficiencies in having that done at the time when the construction is underway as opposed to waiting for the future. And we also plan on coming to council once we have firm quotes for a proposal to add potentially to the project, but we will come to council first in relations to potentially have adding solar efficiency to the new addition of the building. But we're not quite there yet. We don't have a firm quote on that. And so you may recall, your worship, we, we had allocated, I believe it was 4.2 million dollars that was approved between the two communities for us to borrow. That included contingency for cost overruns that we couldn't plan for, and so far we are far below this projected budget, and we are continuing to work on finding efficiencies, particularly with the furnishings. There were approximately $500,000 for a second debenture as part of the 4.2 million, and we're looking approximately $500,000 for second debenture as part of the 4.2 million. And we're looking so far, it's looking that we're going to find some efficiencies there by cutting some of the costs, just looking at some different options for supplies. So before I, I ask Mr. Darling to just provide you with some more specifics with the figures, I, I became aware earlier this week of some, something that, that was disturbing, where there was some information shared in the public forum that, that perhaps your police force in relations to the, the construction costs were not managing those properly, and that the costs were out of control, and that the, the police force spending was out of control. I, I want to assure council and your worship, as well as the citizens of Quisbancis and the citizens of Rodsey, that that is absolutely false information. We are well under budget. We have put in place very rigid measures to monitor and to manage the way that this project is unfolding. Now, we can't account for something that we don't know about, some big rock hiding underneath the whole structure. But so far, we have everything planned. All of the expenses that have been identified in, in the expenditure are listed. They are listed in, in the minutes that we provide from the board. And I want to reassure council and all the citizens that we serve, that your police force, the management of your police force is very diligent, unwavering stewardship towards every single dollars that are awarded or authorized in our budgets. And we, we know that this money is fully funded by taxpayers. We're very cognizant of that. And that's how we manage our budgets with that in mind. So I just want to make sure that that information is clear. Whatever information has been out there is absolutely false. So I'll let Mr. Darling speak to the specific numbers.
Good evening. So we followed the provincial guidelines and tendered both the project manager and the construction project. We did receive eight bids on the project manager and awarded it below our budget, about $30,000 below the budget. We got three bids on the construction. So it was open province, well, it was open anywhere in Canada, I suppose. But we had eight companies attend the pre-closing briefing on the RFP, but only three chose to bid. The chief spoke about some amendments to that. Just to be clear, there were no changes to the plan. So the building has not changed. What we've done is done some energy efficiency items that we were, we put the code in for the, for the insulation and so on, but our, the recommendations we received was to put in some additional. The lighting is energy efficient, and we will receive a grant, so we'll recover some of that money back. We are applying for that. Overall, we budgeted about $3.7 million for construction, and we're coming in right now at about 2.5 even with those amendments. Our financing, we tendered to the five major banks, as well as our local credit union. And we got received four bids, five bids, sorry, five bids out of that. We managed to negotiate a rate of prime less 0.75, so that's below what we had budgeted. So our financing is coming in right now about $10,000 or $12,000 under budget. All in all, now, there will be probably some minor changes as they get through construction. All in all, we're sitting right now at a surplus, not a surplus, we're under budget of $976,000. If there's any questions.
So on the project, we're happy to entertain any questions council may have.
Thank you very much for the presentation, both of you, and, and Acting Deputy Mayor. And, you know, as mayor of one of the fastest-growing communities in Canada, we are up there. I fully support the expansion. I believe that we cannot continue to do more with less. I think we have to have an appropriate workplace for our officers and for our staff. And this is overdue. We, we have grown exponentially population-wise, and we are growing the force. People expect a certain level of service within this community, and you are answering that call. So thank you for what you are doing. And I see some lights on, so I will go to staff, or to council here. Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you for your presentation. We haven't heard the under-budget thing for a long time since COVID, so it was delightful to hear. Just for context, a lot of the other things we're getting are over budget. So please continue to do what you're doing, and every little bit will help all of us. We all, we all live here. The sole, I guess you, you were talking about you're looking for a grant for the lights, I'm assuming for the solar as well?
So the solar is a separate package. We have to, because it's new construction, we don't necessarily qualify because we're listed as a municipal building. So the solar, we, we probably won't qualify for the grants. The lighting, retrofit of the existing building to match the expansion, that we do, we do qualify for a grant for that. So that's where we'll recover some of those, some of those expenses.
Next, we will go to Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, your worship. I'm curious about, you said $976,000 under budget?
Correct.
Correct. That's almost a third of the original, original budget. And what are you doing with all the money?
What do I do with all the money? We don't spend it.
No, I realize that, but what aren't you doing with all the money?
So we didn't change the plans. The estimates we received at the time we received them, their, the building supplies were much higher. So we went based on the estimates. We received three estimates before we came to council for financing approval. And it's just that's where the estimates were at the time. So part of it's a timing thing more than anything. And it, and it may be that maybe people are a little bit more eager for work right now. I'm not sure.
I think that probably just illustrates how out of whack it was a few years ago, and probably stopped a lot of projects, you know. But it's nice to see that, that scrutiny being put against the budget. And it does allow you to, to be, what do they call it, strategic, maybe in expanding some things that you've already budgeted for, but there's worthy, it's worthy of adding to a project underway that will be proper, your, your benefits will be increased by adding it, adding it now rather than after the fact. But anyway, good work there. So congratulations with that.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Deputy Mayor Skryer, please.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you for enduring the heat. So my question is, I believe I heard you said you use the provincial tendering. So is that correct? So you went with the lowest tender?
Yes.
And are you able to share with us who that is?
Home Star.
Home Star? Okay, thank you. And my other question is, or just a comment, I'm glad to see that you did tender for a project manager, because now I'm aging myself. I remember when the other one was built, and we had a project manager, and he was worth his weight in gold, giving us updates on what was happening with the project. So I'm, I'm glad that you have somebody on site to keep you updated on little things. So good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Counselor Olson, please.
Yes, I'd like to move that Chair Darling and Chief Gudrow be thanked for their presentation and Deputy Chief for their presentation updating council on their new police building expansion.
It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Miller. On the question, seeing there are none, please vote now. You want to add something? Go ahead.
So I just wanted to let everyone know that our service level has not changed any. We have made some changes to how we deliver the service, not out in the public, changes just how we work in the building. With a whole part of the parking lot gone, we have had to change things so that it operationally ends up outside of the back of the building. We're having a few parking issues, but we think them, we got them worked out, just with so many vehicles and so many police vehicles coming and going. But I just wanted to assure everyone that the level of service is the exact same as you have always seen.
Thank you very much. I hope the police will be lenient with you, with your parking issue. Motion carried seven zero. Thank you so much for the update and for being here this evening.
Your worship, if any policing questions, I hate to let Acting Deputy Chief Henderson off the hook. If you have any policing questions other than the construction budget, any concerns?
If anyone has any policing questions while Acting Deputy Mayor's, Acting Deputy Chief, Mary Henderson is here. Deputy Mayor Skryer.
The mayor alluded to it in her earlier comments about the, you know, slowdown in speeding. And, you know, we try to put as much, as many calming, traffic calming as we can. But it's still such an issue. And it's, I, it's frustrating to me. So I can't imagine how frustrating it must be to the police trying to get people to slow down. You know, especially you get the long roads like Model Farm Road, the Hampton Road, Gondola Point Road. There's nothing to stop people, right? They just fly because there's no stop signs. It's, they're straight, straight through. Are you going to do any campaigns this summer or anything in the works of trying to get people to really maybe walk? Counselor Luck alluded to about the bike trails, making sure gravel's not on the bike trail so people could walk, or, or wheelchairs. That's so important. I mean, to go on the Gondola Point Road in a wheelchair, it can be quite dangerous in itself, or the Model Farm Road. And I want to make sure that all our residents have the opportunity to enjoy the outdoors safely. And so anyway, I was wondering if you could comment on the traffic and slowing people down?
Sure. And rest assured, we have a full dedicated traffic unit that is attuned to this. We know what's going on. And we do do active patrols every single day in targeted enforcement areas. We have a youth alternative measures program that's related to this. And a lot of the people that we do catch, they are given tickets if they're youth, but they have the opportunity to attend this youth alternative program where they have to attend our police station. And actually, provincial court judges think that it's the most wonderful program because it is teaching them at that level that you can't speed. So if they fulfill all the requirements of the alternative measures program, their ticket's voided. On the other hand, we do feel that the traffic calming measures work. Because when we do targeted enforcement down there, you don't see what we used to see. And the perception is, of course, when the police aren't there, people do speed. And I can appreciate that because we know that that happens. But we are in the midst of cycling season, and we're going to do a social media campaign on safe cycling. We're going to do a campaign on ATV safety, because we do get a lot of complaints about ATVs not necessarily over on this side of the highway, but typically over maybe across on the other side, as well as motorcycle safety. So they'll be available on our website probably within the next week that people can look at and read. But we are aware of it, Deputy Mayor, and we're working on it. And we do targeted enforcement almost every day, you know, in these areas. But if there's something that you want, that we can link to your website, we would be more than happy to promote that as well, if you have anything of that nature we could do. But we do see it, and we do, we do like the traffic calming measures. We really do. We do find they're effective. I find them effective. I live in a subdivision with all the speed rooms. Nobody comes and visits me anymore. Anyways, yes, it is a valid concern, and we're working on it because it is a priority of ours.
Thank you. And we still have a couple more. Don't go away.
I just wanted to add, your worship, on that, something I said at council on this specific point last time was if you receive calls, and I know councillors receive a lot of calls about all sorts of traffic issues, tell them to call the police. It's not a council issue. It's a police issue. So we need to hear where are the problems for people to call councillors. And then we don't hear from any one councillor when you've, until you've received, I don't know, 50 or 60 calls on a particular issue, on Queensbury, for example, we need, we need to hear from the complainant, from the people who are actually seeing these people speeding. That's very important.
Thank you very much. And Counselor Miller?
I think it's my microphone. Actually, maybe if I use Mr. Bakers? Yeah. Oh, it's working now. Hello, hello? It's home. Thank you. That better? And I guess I had a question. From last year, we talked about a pilot project was going on with NB Power on the telephone poles and things like that. And I also believe since that time, New Brunswick, I'm not 100% sure of this, but I think New Brunswick has looked at potentially looking at speed radar photo. And I believe that's, that's a trial or tests. And, and when you talk about around here, no, it's probably not the right spot, maybe in a school zone. But when you look at some of our remoter roads that people could be going significantly more, is that something that we'd even in, think about using maybe potentially as a, as a trial in, in some of these? Because I don't know, I mean, obviously, we got the, the focus of people here, but there's a few areas that, you know, that aren't as well traveled.
So Counselor Miller, we have actually started with NB Power, but it's for a different purpose. It's not necessarily for speeding or infractions like photo radar, but it's for intelligence and, you know, gathering information for crimes that may be outstanding. But we have started that project. And I think the chief can talk to you just a little bit about photo radar, because there were some issues with that provincially. It wasn't necessarily with us, but it was just how the, would roll provincially and what the implications for that would be. So we do look forward to using it more often because we, it just started in April, the NB Power project, yes?
I, I can go on the record, Counselor Miller, that personally, as, as a, as a police officer since the early 80s, I don't, I am not a supporter of speed-catching radar hidden items. I, I just don't like the, the premise of that. But I am a supporter of that technology being used at intersections that have controlled devices such as traffic lights. I think we definitely have a problem there in some areas, especially after work. People are in a rush to get home, and that's, that's an issue. So I would be a supporter of that. But the, the downside to it is so far, from what I know since we've inquired about this, this comes at your cost. And you do not reap the benefits of the fines. So that needs to be addressed. That, that is just not manageable from, I'm sure, from a, from a municipality's perspective. If you were to reap some benefits, then I, I would believe that it's something that we certainly would, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I would raise my hand and, and, and volunteer for a pilot project.
Thank you very much. Counselor Luck?
Thank you, your worship. It was mentioned about the safe road and cycling campaign, and I just wanted to kind of reiterate. So thank you for mentioning that, that it would be great for both municipalities, I can only speak for Quisbancis municipality, of course, to share the posts just so that we get better reach. Because, you know, again, there's only a certain demographic following the, you know, the police commissioner, the police force. So I think if, as both towns can share that as well, I think it would have a greater reach and greater impact. So, and thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. I believe you're done. Thank you so much for your presentation this evening and for being here. Acting Deputy Mayor, it, or Deputy Chief, you must be very, very warm with that vest on. So before you come up, I'm just going to ask if council would mind if we could move item 9A first, because it's going to be a fairly lengthy discussion, I believe. And just out of respect for this gentleman who is waiting, not that you're not waiting, but he will be very quick, I believe. So council, are we okay with that change? Okay, thank you. So under correspondence, MPSF subdivision phase two, Elpen Glow, request for development agreement extension. In attendance is Mr. Stephen Forgeron. In attendance is Mr. Stephen Forgeron, developer. Would you please come up to the podium? Just give me one second. So we are looking at Number 9A. Mr. Colburn, was there anything you wanted to add to that? You're good?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward. If there's any questions, I can...
Counselor Bigger?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I've reviewed the, the documents and I'm prepared to make a motion that council accept staff's recommendation and extend MPSF Development Inc.'s subdivision development agreement, Phase Two at Alpenglow for a further three-month period, with all works to be completed by October 31, 2024.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Luck. On the question? Counselor Luck?
Sorry.
Oh, you're okay. Deputy Mayor Schreier?
Thank you, your worship, and through you to, I'm just trying to get my bearings here, Mr. Forgeron, on exactly where this is. So there's the driveway to your property. Is this down from there on the Model Farm Road? I'm confused as to where it is. I'm sorry.
The Alpenglow development, you mean, are you referring to my personal property or the Alpenglow development?
The, this property here. Where, where exactly?
That's the Alpenglow property that is between Brunswick Nurseries and the next home. And then the next home, and then would be my personal property.
So it's Brunswick Nurseries, then the next home?
Then, then the public street, which is Alpenglow. Which is, yes, which is a, it's a gravel road at the moment.
And how many lots do you have in there now?
Seven approved lots, a potential subdivision of a four-acre lot is being considered. And a possible sale of another 17 acres at the very end as a vacant land.
Another 17 acres, yeah. Another 17 acres, you said?
Yes. That's not under the subject of the bond agreement.
Right, right. Thank you. I was just a little confused on this picture where exactly it was. I knew it was off the Model Farm Road, but it was not 100%. Thanks.
Google represents my driveway as Alpenglow. So we have lots of delivery trucks coming up, our own personal driveway. So I understand the confusion. If you go to Google Maps, they show my personal driveway as Alpenglow occasionally. It depends which, if you're using Apple or Google or heaven knows what.
So AI isn't quite as smart as they think they are.
That's right. Department of New Brunswick has it right on their maps.
So it's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Luck on the question. Please vote now. Motion carrot seven zero. Thank you for being here this evening.
Your worship and council, thank you for your consideration and approval.
Thank you.
Have a nice, cool evening.
Now we will move to Item 5D, Town of Chris Pamsys Strategic Plan, Implementation of Operations Plans, Level of Service Update. In attendance, Jackman Dernford, Senior Associate of Porter O'Brien. Welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you for sitting a couple of extra minutes.
Yes, of course.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship, Deputy Mayor, councillors and staff. Thanks for your attention on this sort of uncomfortable evening. I thought I was, when I left Frederiton, it was 37 degrees. I thought I was going to be much cooler in St. John and Chris Pamsys, but I guess I wasn't. So the Level of Service project that we've been working on with municipal staff, this is my last portion of it. And I just wanted to share with you sort of the updates of, of what's left still to do, what has been agreed upon. I've had the pleasure of working with municipal staff over the last little while and I just want to have an opportunity to say thank you for putting your trust in me and for your transparency and your willingness to try and make mistakes and try and try again. So this project was begun based off the Strategic Plan Implementation Plan that we put together. And the entire basis for this Level of Service Agreement was one of the things that we found was probably one of the most glaring opportunities from an operational perspective was long-term planning. Now, Level of Service Agreement facilitates long-term planning for budgeting, for resources, for staff, for, you name it, and, and Level of Service can help with long-term planning for that. So what we have pulled together is we sort of have taken all of the operational services that the staff are doing, and not just operations, but administrative, financial, all of those things. And we've broken them into two sections. So one section is what you would share on your public website if you wanted to. The other section is what we're calling those day-to-day internal operational staff, operational tasks. Things like, we don't need to have a Level of Service for how many times the toilet paper's being changed in the public washrooms. But we do have to have a Level of Service. If you have a request that comes in, how long should you expect before someone returns that call or answers your email? So what we did is we grouped those, took the two big broad categories and then broke them down. So you'll notice that some of the ones that are public-facing, they don't have either a response or a resolution time on them because some of them are already governed under other agreements, a legislative requirement to respond. Or if they're part of, say, a capital project, well, that project's going to have its own timeline for completion and response and resolution and things like that. Some of the tasks, you'll notice, don't have a resolution time against them, just a response time. So for instance, I'll use that example of the queries that come into the administrative desk. We can't put a resolution time on every one of those because then you'd have to have a million and one different resolution times because you don't know what those questions are going to be. We did a lot of research across Canada for comparable municipalities and even larger and smaller municipalities to see what they're posting. And one of the things that we suggested to council in their, in the Strategic Plan Implementation Document was that this is a real opportunity for Chris Pamsys to show some thought leadership. Now, the City of Moncton has some of their service levels posted on their website. But if you look into it, there's a lot of those everyday pieces that are posted on there that are just not something that would give you a return on investment to track. The ones that we have posted, that we have identified here is really for transparency. And I keep coming back to that word because that's what this is going to cultivate. Transparency for you as councillors. So if someone calls you and says, "I reported that there's a stop sign down. Why hasn't anyone gotten back to me yet?" You easily can verify and say, "Okay, when did you call? Thursday?" Someone, it's, we've got until the end of day tomorrow, you know, someone will get back to you. Or there, any of those things. Transparency for staff to understand what they're working towards. You can't tell someone they're not hanging a target if they don't know what the target is, right? And transparency for your constituents to understand, to say, "I know that if I'm living in this subdivision and there's less than 100 people that use this road, then here's what I need to expect for plowing or sanding or salting or something like that." So that's what this is really, really based on. Now, I'm, I'm not going to do storytime and read each one of them for you. There's just a couple that I really want to highlight. So in those publicly posted Level of Service Agreement services, you'll see the very first part are those that already have established delivery agreements. That's Page Three, Krista. Okay, those, so that's, you've got your Priority One, you've got plowing, things like that, facility snow removal, rentals and bookings, those types of things. Grouping One and Two are the two most critical and you'll see that they have quite a quick response time. Now, Response Grouping One, that's emergency response. And that might even change a little bit as you folks are working with, Deputy Mayor, you mentioned the Regional Service Commission, right? So bringing in those municipal services and, and I know that there is a new, and I apologize if I get the name of it wrong, is it an emergency measures organization, a new, right? So I mean, this is, this is what we have right now. A lot of the anticipated resolution completion times is we've said that the triage will be completed within three hours of the full team being on site, okay? And then a resolution estimate can be provided. That can be provided through your social media channels. It can be provided through bulletins, you know, emails, what have you. The challenge that we have in identifying all of the resolution times that we came across is some of the software programs that are being used for work order and service, service request identification. So it is about, let's say, 70% of the way there. It's just not quite enough, not fulsome enough, to deliver all of the data as of yet. However, there is a new, and Erin, can you help me? I apologize, I'm completely blanking on the name of the new system. Or Dana? The, for, for work, for work orders, service requests that they're using.
We, we use Q11.
Right, exactly. So, so updates and, and new versions of that are, that's in the plan operationally to be installed. And then that will give you even a further level of awareness of these. So I think that beeper meant that my time was up. Did it? Oh, okay. So it's pretty self-explanatory. As I say, the second category are services that you might not put, it's not that you're trying to hide anything, but those are more day-to-day internal facing tasks. For instance, GIS data collection, maintenance and dissemination, right? You're probably not going to have many constituents that have a real interest in how often that's happening. So as I say, this is the last portion of my interaction with this project. The rest of it, the next steps are with municipal staff to identify this, to gather data and to make those tweaks, as well as identifying those areas that they're hitting and as well as identifying the percentage of resolution that they're hitting. To, to say that we're going to hit this target 100% of the time, it's just not realistic. It's just not realistic. If you do say that we, our target is to hit it 75% of the time and then they're not hitting it 75% of the time, that's a really good opportunity to say, why not? Is it staffing? Is it training? Is it tools? Is the target not realistic? Those types of things. So I'm very open to discuss any of this with anyone, answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sternforre. I will go to Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you very much. Very interesting. Just one question I had was, you kind of alluded to it at the end in terms of, you know, having targets and not meeting them. And then, you know, it forces us to ask the question, is it because, you know, we don't have enough staff or is the targets aren't realistic? So in terms of the targets that have been set to date?
Right.
Are those expectations, do those align with our current staffing?
Yes and no. I know, that's not a very, that's not a very good answer, I'm sorry. Those are targets that the staff, that we sort of came to a consensus on. It's better to have a target to work towards and maybe not hit it than to have no target at all. So that's why I say there needs to be a lot of time to just gather data and to look at it. We looked at these, determined, we used that whole SMART approach and these were measurable, appropriate, realistic, timely, all of those things. So there are also input from some best practices as well. Now, the targets of those, the very first response grouping, Counselor Luck, that, that already have established targets and things, those have been in place for a while, like in terms of road clearing and response times, things like that. And, and they're hitting those quite regularly. But the rest of them, the, particularly the triage, you know, three hours for the team, to all the team to get on site and to triage an issue, that's actually pretty generous. Yeah, it's actually pretty generous. Particularly given that if staff are on call, you know, there's already some expectations that they be, you know, to the site to pick up equipment or something within a certain timeframe that's much less than that three hours. So this gives travel time to an incident. This gives, okay, we've got to, you know, go get this bit of equipment to bring on site for something. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. It's informative and I do believe in benchmarking. I do have a couple of questions though, if you allow me. First is Response Group Five, which is responding to residents. And the timeline is two days.
Yep.
And I'm wondering how you came about that timeline of two days? Because in my mind, the top priority of everything is the resident.
Sure.
The resident's calling, we need to be able to answer fairly quickly and efficiently, whether it's just saying, "We've received your call, this is going to happen." But, you know, I don't think we should take two days to say, "We received your call." So I would, I challenge that today. I would like to see that changed.
Okay.
So that, because we're resident-focused.
Sure.
And just your comments on that.
Yeah, sure, Deputy Mayor, thanks.
And then I have a follow-up question.
Thanks for that question. So the two business days to respond is to provide you with information. So all email systems and things can give an automatic response, which would say, "Thank you, Mary, I've received, we've received your email. Staff members will evaluate it and provide a response to you within a certain timeframe." So two business days, the two business days is put in there because of weekends, holidays and evenings. So there are no municipal staff that monitor an email program or a phone other than for, say, emergency issues. And those are triaged. If someone reports an issue, those are triaged as those work services come in. More than anything, this is to set a level of expectation. So if you send an email to town hall to say, "I'd like to have the tree trimmed out front on my sidewalk," then they're not probably going to get a response, let's say, until Monday anyway because of business hours and because those requests are triaged based on emergency. That's a very different situation than if someone calls and says, "Oh my gosh, my water main out front is broken." Right? So I could add clarity to that to say non-urgency. And, and if you look at the, that's daily operational, right? That's not the response grouping that requires council approval, that public safety at risk prevents the delivery of essential services, anything like that. Those are the categorization that we use for those response groupings. So this is a daily operational, right? They're getting back to them much quicker than that. But the business days was put in there to establish an expectation that they're not going to get a response on a Saturday night. Does that make sense? Yeah. So the other way to address that would be, you know, without that business day categorization, then you're going to have to assign someone to be monitoring those systems for non-urgency responses other than that. And it's just about, you know, establishing expectations.
Okay, thank you. And I know it's a little different. We also have a four-day work week.
Yep.
That comes into play. But I always want to make sure that if the residents are asking, that we get back to them as quickly as possible, even just, you know, just confirming that they've received, somebody got their email. And that brings me to the question of, you know, how, when emails come to council.
Yep.
Council members, and we forward them on. It's easier for people to want to reach out. it, and somebody else sends it, and.
Sure.
We, all of us might get one email, and then all of a sudden, who answered? Who's on first and who's on second?
Sure, sure.
Somebody needs to answer.
Yeah.
And so that brings me to my last question, and it has to do with the vision planning. I couldn't help but notice that there was nothing about council. And I don't know if that discussion ever happened, if we talked about you benchmarking, like, if council says, we want to, you know, we want to do so many training programs a year, or we want to do, I, I don't know, it's to be something that councils decided that they would, you know, they want to do a community, so many community outreach programs such as, I don't know, maybe host the Chamber of Commerce out here, or host a financial literacy conference, something like that. There was nothing at all regarding council, and I'm just wondering, in the strategic plan, was there something about that with council? Was there anything?
In terms, in terms of council's work, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, yes.
There was, in, in the strategic document that we prepared, there was some suggested training for council. I believe there was some media training and perhaps some governance training based sort of around election times, right? So if you have a brand-new slate of counselors, it's always a good opportunity to, you know, to ensure that they have the tools that they need. But in terms of counselor output, that wasn't part of the, the projects that we did, it was more operational staff. So, so the, within a strategic plan, I'll just take sort of two giant steps backwards here, within a strategic plan, the mayor and the council establish the vision. It's your vision of what the municipality is moving towards. You establish those key, sorry, those, I get very excited, sorry. You establish those key result areas, those pillars, those focus areas that are important for the municipality over the next three to five years. Operational staff, then, are the ones that develop the actions, the goals, the timing, the resources. Because it's your job to establish the vision, it's the municipal staff to execute it. So that's why our, our whole projects have been focusing on the municipal staff. Yeah. Whereas the council are, you folks have already done your heavy lifting, you've already established your vision, your key result areas, those goals, yeah.
And, and just for clarity, it's, the strategic plan and, and the operational aspect of it is for the operations of the organization.
Absolutely.
And just to go back to the emails that we would receive, we, even though we have compressed employees, compressed work weeks, we are open actually.
Yes.
More hours than what we previously were, so we do have staff five days a week, and then we have people that, that do their regular work on the weekends as well. So I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was clear.
Yeah.
Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for your presentation. I guess a concern I have is how we're going to track this and how it's going to be, because you don't want to build a world's heaviest airplane and it takes more time to track it. So is everything going to be directed, and we got to make sure we're not double-dipping? Because when you talk about EMO, well, we have the Chief of, Chief of Fire is EMO, he's doing his whole strategic plan himself.
Right.
That group is doing it in conjunction, and you're, we're going to see a lot more of that.
Yeah.
Is this all going to be directed to go into like Q one one? The reason I say that, if you start doing emails and phone calls and everything else, and you're trying to say, oh, when did you get back to somebody? Q one one is beautiful, because it says, when you put it there, you do get an email right away that says, because I've been in there, you get an email, says it's, it's coming, and then generally, very shortly after.
Yep.
You get a, a response from somebody, that's what's going on, or I drive by the tree that broke down, and it's, and it's gone, so.
Yep.
So what's the strategy for us to do that? Because you don't want to spend more time tracking it than.
And that's a great question. Thank you, Counselor Miller. And that sort of ties into, to what the Deputy Mayor had said, you know, five of you send an email saying that we got a call, you know, that there's a, a street light down, something like that. So Q one one can give, with this latest update, can give real-time reporting. The challenge is, is some of the behavioral and procedural change that needs to happen within the field. So right now, there's emails, things like that, but Q one one should be your source of knowledge. Our suggestion is that once a month, those reports are pulled, how are we doing? Comparative, okay. How are we doing? And then once a quarter, a deep dive into those reports to say, okay, we, this is a dumpster fire in our results over here for X activity, or X task, Y. And that gives you, that data is actionable, right? I love actionable data. And that data is actionable, you can look at it and say, okay, it's in this area, is it because of staffing? Is it because of tools? Is it because of training, what have you? And that's where you address that issue, versus big wide paintbrush to try to fix everything. No, we can zero in and fix on specific issues. Yeah. Yeah. And all of the municipal, the executive team, they, they've been, you know, hip-deep in all of these discussions and understanding what all of these tasks are. And the one thing that has become so clear to me is the interdependency of every single department within this municipality and these cross-functional teams, how it's not just Dana's crew that's doing something, right? She's got her crew, and this crew, and this crew. It's, it's very, very cross-functional teams here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm prepared to make a motion. Appreciate all the insights and the hard work that's being done. It's exciting to see this LSA project really get on the go. Anyway, I would move that Mrs. Durnford be thanked for her presentation, and as per her recommendation, the executive team be directed to, as the first step in adoption of the service standards, perform a monitoring exercise, including implementation of the updated service request software, to evaluate what the existing levels of service currently are, and determine what is required to meet the desired level of service standards, staff, equipment, operating procedures, et cetera.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier. On the question.
On the question.
On the question, Deputy Mayor.
Just one last question. I noticed in the motion about the software, is there a cost to that, update of that software?
I don't believe so. I believe it's, Krista, you would know more, no? I don't believe so. I believe it's the newest version. It's, it's sort of like the next package, Deputy Mayor, so to speak, right? The one that they have in place is, is a, is a little bit out of date.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Colbert.
Sorry, just to add on to that, sorry, Deputy Mayor, there's training and things that go with that as well, as part of the update, so, yeah.
Yeah, we're, through you, Your Worship, we're reviewing that new software, and part of, part of that is, it's, it's tied to and integrated into our GIS system, so part of the cost is covered through our GIS integration as well. So that's sort of an advantage of it being a tie into our GIS system, so, versus having to go and purchase all new software. There's an integration component of it, so, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Colbert. Mr. Kennedy, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. And if I could just add to that, I think his council is aware that the response times in this community are very strong, and if you let us know in the morning that there's a stop sign down, the stop sign's probably going to be up before the person heads home from work at the end of the day. We might not get around to the email to say the stop sign's been fixed until two days later, but people are obviously satisfied that the work's been done, so that's what they're, that's what they're seeking. In terms of Q one one, Mr. Rozell, our Communications and Engagement Coordinator, does a fantastic job when people send things to us. A lot of them are through Facebook. People seem to think that the magical Facebook fairy is monitoring things at ten-thirty on a Saturday night, so they think it's something, they send it through, and he does a great job of taking that information, submitting it to Q one one on their behalf, and then providing those folks with the four-one-one on Q one one to say, hey, the next time you have something like this, this is the best way to do it, and they really appreciate that, because some people didn't know about it, and they're happy that their, their concern has been actioned, and happy that they know how to do it the next time around, because a lot of those folks are familiar people that find some issues that they have some concerns with, so they, they send them our way, so we appreciate that. So I thought it was important to just mention that, and again, just to assuage the Deputy Mayor's concerns that the compressed work week has zero negative impact on the operations of this municipality. That was something that we went through a very painstaking detail to ensure that that was the case. You know, our neighboring municipality in St. John took a different approach, and they, their level of service is clearly affected on Fridays, but ours isn't. And we thought that that was important, and when we first brought that initiative to council a couple of years ago, that we committed to that, and I can happily say that we have lived up to that commitment over the past couple of years since we were trailblazers in the compressed work week, Your Worship.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Counselor Donovan, please.
Thank you. Just to build on that, maybe in the future, it might be worthwhile for us to look at, you know, I know a lot of businesses in the private sector, they're using artificial intelligence with like Facebook Messenger and Twitter, or X messages and so on, so that when you submit your information, you can set it up so that the artificial intelligence will actually submit that ticket to Q one one instead of actually having Mr. Rozell or somebody else have to do it for us. So it might be a little costly, I don't know, I'm, I'm not well-versed on that, but it might be worth looking into.
Thank you. It has been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier. Deputy Mayor?
I, yay.
Yeah. You can tell it's more. Motion carried seven-zero. Thank you very much, Jackie, certainly appreciated.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for the opportunity, folks.
Go ahead. Item five D one, council discussion on 2025 strategic plan budget priorities.
Council discussion on.
Council discussion on 2025 strategic plan budget priorities.
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess I was the one that requested that, you know, we start looking at our strat plan as we head into budgeting. And I guess, you know, it's really great to look, because a strat plan, again, is supposed to be fluid, and, you know, we did develop it two years ago, so it's wonderful, and I think that we are making a lot of great strides in, you know, accomplishing our goals and objectives. I guess my rationale of bringing it to council was really to look at, you know, we can't do everything tomorrow or in 2025, so to be able to look at our pillars that we did identify, and basically identify kind of what some of the priorities are. So, you know, because I think in the past, it was always like everyone got a bucket, and then they spent the bucket kind of accordingly. And I think in terms of our strat plan and looking at kind of longer-term, you know, kind of goals and objectives, what we may have to do is look at what our priorities are, and then decide what budget gets allocated where. I guess that's what I'd like to see, just so that we make sure that, you know, if housing and water and active transportation are the priorities that we're setting, that we're making sure we're, we're kind of building our budget accordingly. So that was kind of my rationale of, you know, of, for all of us to take a look at the, the four, you know, bigger pillars that we've identified and the goals and objectives under each one. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Anyone else like to speak to the strategic plan in front of you? The four pillars with infrastructure management, commitment to community, economic development, So this was for information. Your recommendation has been noted, Counselor Luck? Go ahead.
So, yeah, I'm just wondering if, I'm, I'm not sure if, if maybe this forum is the best to have the discussion. I, I guess, you know, just because everyone's very hot, it's a very long night, and I'm not sure if it's feasible to potentially have either a special meeting, even just virtually, just to kind of go through each one and kind of identify, are we still heading in the right direction? Do we all still agree with all the goals and objectives? And then when it comes to the goals and objectives that we've actually identified, are there things that stand out to us that are a little bit higher up on the priority that we want to see more money invested in, in the next year or two, so that it would give staff more direction in terms of operationalizing it for the next budget and future budgets? But I just don't know, I guess in this forum, I'm not sure if that's the, it's the easiest, plus, again, it's very hot in here, so I'm not sure if there would be an appetite to maybe do a special meeting, even virtually, just to kind of go through the four kind of pillars with the goals and objectives, and just make sure that we're still kind of, you know, in agreement? You know, because things do change, and even since we built this, a lot of things in the environment has changed. Our housing has completely gone awry, ironically, or not ironically, quite sadly, in the last even two years, things have really changed in the economy, so I'm just thinking that, you know, now would be a really good time to kind of look at that and just make sure that, you know, there's not anything missing, and then also in terms of kind of helping staff in terms of what council feels are, you know, higher priorities, like water, for example. You know, just to give them a bit of direction in terms of where we'd like to see, you know, things operationalized over the next few years.
Okay, and just bearing in mind that budget deliberations, of course, with staff have been ongoing, and if this is something where council is going to, I'm going to turn your mic off. Where, if this is something where council is going to identify specific initiatives or strategies that you would like to see in place, or that council would like to see in place, those would have to be made known sooner rather than later, so I don't know if you had a, a date or a time in place.
Well, I guess, I mean, I can send out a doodle poll to council if, if, you know, we wanted to. I mean, typically in the summer, we only meet once for council, so I'm not sure if there would be a time that we could all find that, you know, we could take an hour to kind of discuss it, and I, you know, as a special meeting. I mean, I think this is an important, you know, piece. It's our strategic plan, and it does set our, you know, kind of our strategy for the future. You know, and, and I think it, you know, we, we get a chance to kind of review where we feel, you know, kind of the, you know, the limited resources we have are directed. So I think it's an important, you know, task that council should be reviewing. We haven't looked at it for two years, and I think moving into the next budgeting, you know, I mean, I would like to see, and perhaps council is in agreement, if that's, they don't want to, I'm, I'm fine with that, but I would, I personally would like to sit down with council and just hear, you know, review the goals and objectives and hear what other people are thinking, just to, again, be able to give a bit more direction in terms of how the budget is allocated.
Okay. Thank you. And, and if it's something, for example, with infrastructure management, if it's water on the Hampton Road, if that was something that people wanted to earmark, then that would be the discussion. And maybe that's the way to approach it, is to say, you know, what is it that each counselor wants to identify, and you may have the same as I might have, or whatever, and just sort of nail those down. So we'll, we'll give that some thought. I'll go to the next in line here. Counselor Big.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I mean, I'll just echo the sentiment that Counselor Luck brings up about the, it seems to be that there's an agreement here generally, that we want to make sure that we're paying proper attention to the pillars and the objectives under those pillars of the strategic plan as we begin to. pillars of the strategic plan as we begin to consider 2025 budget items. I mean, that to me seems as plain as the nose on my face, as my grandmother would say. I would just want to say as well that, just as a specific example, of course, we're all talking about housing and the first step of that being our water expansion hopes. And I was heartened by, the minutes are contained in the report section. I was heartened by the discussion that we had in the working group on water expansion a couple of weeks ago. And I felt fairly optimistic about kind of the potential to strategize as a group and to move forward on that. There are some opportunities, I think, that until we got into that meeting, I was concerned about, well, the HAF didn't work out, so now what? And I see that housed directly right here under the infrastructure management pillar. And so I think that I'm glad to see that there's simpatico, the discussion that we're having, which in one sense, a person might say is almost a bit of a reaction to a sort of a five alarm fire, you know, about the need to expand our water services, not really a five alarm fire, given that it's stretched on for so long. But we really feel the acute need. And yet, it's also something that we've talked about in this strategic document for, you know, long-term planning. So I'm looking forward to seeing that grafted in. And I think that as, in that specific example, is that Working Water Group Committee considers the need to procure funding, as we talked about, or backing up reserves for this, you know, like funding reserves toward this. That all, to me, that all is part of the budget process. And so I think we just have got to, whether we have a special meeting related strictly speaking to the application of the strategic plan to budget deliberations, I don't, I don't know. We can decide as a group about that. But I certainly believe that it should be a very seminal part of the discussion. So I'll just, I'll just add that, I guess.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Thank you, worship. I too believe that there needs to be further discussion on this. I mean, if you just look at economic development, that's a discussion that we should be having, counsel, where we're going with economic development, how with our businesses, who's attracting it, how Envision is working for us, bringing more job opportunities, what is our, what does our market look like out here? There's all sorts of questions that we really don't talk about when it comes to our business community that I think is important and how we're going to support them and follow up with them. So that's, I just picked one out because I'm not going to look at them all, just to say, I agree. I think that the conversation needs to happen about where exactly we want to be. If we're looking at economic development, I think I've said something earlier about, you know, are we going to host the chamber out here? Are we going to, what are our plans for economic development in Quispamsis? And that's put something on paper. And so, and even things like that don't cost money. They wouldn't have to go to finance because you don't have to, you know, it's something that we could do just on our own. So I agree. I think that we need to have a further discussion on this.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Donovan, please.
Thank you. I also agree. I think it's important for us to have those discussions. I know sometimes we get wrapped up in council and it's, it's a time sensitive thing where, you know, you don't want to talk forever and some meetings go longer than others. And it can certainly get a little wishy-washy, especially when you have so many objects, especially during the summer, you know, when we have one meeting, one meeting a month. It tends to be sometimes a fairly long meeting and I just don't want those items to get lost. So to put something more into concrete, I would be prepared to make a motion that council host a special meeting regarding this subject in August at some point. And we can discuss as a group when that point may be. But I believe August would allow all of us a little bit of time to sit back and think about what's important to us and maybe what's changed over the year or the years, and then just sort of come back as a group and hammer that out together. So sometime in August would be my preference and it doesn't matter to me when, but thanks.
There is a motion on the table. Ms. Brandon, please.
Through you, your worship. I just wanted to point out too, council at any time can make a motion and direct something to the 2025 budget. That can happen at any point in time throughout the year, you know, and we can take those. Our action comes from your motions. I just wanted to remind everybody of that.
And that being said, that this could all be done in July rather than waiting until a special meeting. And I know there's a motion on the table. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? Counselor Luck?
Oh, I guess, you know, and I agree with all this. I guess, you know, and I realize that we can make a motion at any time. And that's kind of hopefully what the output of that meeting would be, is that we all kind of align on what our priorities are and then make a motion so that staff would, you know, again, as my point was earlier, is that sometimes every year, we kind of get around the same amount of money and we look for, like, you know, kind of continue on our, our own little department spending based on, you know, what we feel is important. But I'd like for council to kind of look at it and say, you know what, well, maybe, you know, if we say something over here is a priority, we're going to have to say, like, if we only have so much money, then where are we going to find that money to do it? So I guess that's a discussion before we start making motions on what's important and what's not. Again, I'm not sure what people's vacation schedules. I know that the longer we wait, the harder it is because they are in budget planning right now. I guess I was thinking that because we typically need, you know, the first Tuesday of the month, most of the year, I'm not sure if we could have a special meeting on the first Tuesday of July, if council, and again, perhaps this is something we can, you know, try and figure out over email in terms of an actual date. But typically, we're used to meeting every other Tuesday. And then that way, it's quick, it's focused, and it's not, you know, I think because we're meeting in the summer with just one council meeting, the agenda is very, very lofty. It's quite big. So it's really hard to have a thorough discussion just on this one, because I think that we would need at least an hour to have a good discussion, which would make a very long meeting with everything else that's added to just a one meeting per month. So anyway, I guess my preference would be if we could and if everyone was available, that we'd meet the first Tuesday of the month and have a special meeting, even virtually with council, you know, in light of us kind of being used to meeting on the first Tuesday of every other month. And then it's early enough that we can kind of give any motions that we feel we want to make for budget planning. That's my two cents.
So I'm not quite understanding. Are you saying meet the first Tuesday of July and then the first Tuesday?
No, no, just the first Tuesday of July. Like, I just, I worry about August being a little too late for staff because I know that they are in the thick of making plans for the budget. So I think, you know, in respecting the time that everyone's putting in, I'd like to give them any direction sooner than later. So I guess my suggestion is, or we can try and do a doodle poll and find another time that works for people.
We have a motion for an Aug.
There's a motion right now on the table for an August date, and there is not a second. And again, I just want to remind council that we, we can have the discussion at our July meeting, you know, whether it takes an hour or whether it takes an hour and a half, I'm fine with that. But trying to get everybody back for a summertime meeting is going to be challenging. We can't get people out to some of the committee meetings now as it is. And, you know, I think we have to be cognizant of the fact that people work hard all week long and that if we can do this during the council time, then perhaps that would be optimum. That's correct. So Counselor Donovan, no one has seconded that motion. Was there a second, a second to the meeting? Was there a second?
You didn't record it, so that's fine.
No, I don't. Well, we don't have the motion recorded, do we?
I, so, can I, am I able to speak? Is that okay? I, and that's fine with me. My biggest concern is just, you know, we have a cutoff and I don't obviously think we're going to go to 11 o'clock in the middle of the summer. But I just worry about things being, you know, where we only have that one meeting in the summer, it being an incredibly long agenda. And then it just kind of getting swept under because I find what happens is, you know, and I'm not, you know, taking away from anybody's contributions, but I find the longer these council meetings go, the less sort of involved sometimes people become, especially with those issues. So that's why I was hoping to have a, you know, a special meeting. Because again, if you look at our, you know, our, what we're required to do on council is it's, we're required to meet. You know, we, we know we've come into this job where we meet twice a month. And during the summer, yes, it's once a month. But if it's for an hour, an hour and a half, I don't think that's going to harm many of us, as long as it works, obviously, with, you know, summer schedules. But again, if my motion didn't have a second, then it's, it's kind of a moot point. But I would like to leave tonight with something concrete.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. Mr. Kennedy, please.
Thank you, your worship. Tonight's meeting was especially long because of the presentations. I think council would agree that those generally are not as numerous in July and August because the folks that come and present to us have other things that they'd rather be doing. So maybe to try to wrap this up, if we put this on the agenda as an item for the July 18th meeting, if for whatever reason, council is not satisfied with the fulsomeness of the discussion on that night, then the ability, if council so desired, to schedule a meeting in August would still exist. Of course, the mayor is able, you don't need a motion of council. The mayor can call a special meeting with 24 hours' notice at any time. So that might be a way to sort of streamline this, to move forward with the discussion on, I think it's July 16th or whatever that the July meeting is, might make things a little more easier. And then if that extra special meeting is required, council could make that decision then, rather than planning to look at a special meeting after the next regular council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Counselor Luck, please.
Oh, I didn't, I don't think I have your button pressed.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, worship. And I agree. So, but I really like what you did when you sent an email out to people and said, people, what are my top three or whatever? I think we all know we're going to talk about stuff on the 18th. So perhaps everybody be prepared, you know, have, have your three top priorities that you would like to emphasize and maybe have three you'd like to de-emphasize and why, just so that it makes the conversation fluid and quick. But we, I think we all have in our minds what we want to do. But it's nice just to put, I say three, just because we can't do 50, but whatever. But just, just an idea. But I think we should be able to do it to Counselor Donovan's comment. I think, you know, tonight was long, but I think if we're all prepared and we come in, I don't, I don't think we're going to be a surprise. I know you don't want water and stuff like that. But, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for that, Counselor Miller. So we've had the recommendation, the suggestion for everyone to prioritize their, their list for the July 16th meeting. Counselor Bigger.
Is a motion required? Or are we, can we just, yes, okay. So I'll make a motion that as Counselor, well, sure, there was no second. So it died. Yeah. I'll make a motion that we, as Counselor Miller just outlined and as we've been discussing, a motion that we move the discussion about strategic plan, budget-related items to the July regular council meeting.
July 16th.
July 16th, thank you.
It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Luck on the question. Please vote now. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
I was just going to say, just to comment, we don't need a motion to put something on the agenda, do we?
Yeah.
The clerk, the clerk felt that it was necessary to have it on the agenda, yes.
It provides clarity for the next agenda on this.
It, it provides clarity for the next agenda on this item so that we know exactly what we are asking for. So it's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Luck on the question. Please vote now. You good, everyone? Motion carried? Motion carried seven zero. Thank you, everyone. Item number six is public hearings. There are none. Item number seven, minutes of the previous meeting to be moved and accepted as presented. Moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried seven zero. Unfinished business, ratification of email poll, town scholarships awarded, staff reports from town clerk and director of community services. Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, worship. I move council ratify the email poll conducted on June 6, 2024 to approve the scholarship committee's recommendations to award the towns three $750 scholarships to the KVHS students as noted in the director of community services staff report dated June 6, 2024.
It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier. On the question, please vote now. Counselor Luck?
Oh, no.
No, you're good?
Okay.
Motion carried seven zero. Item nine A has already been carried out. Item nine B, correspondence from Counselor Miller, request for summary of consultant costs of 2023 and costs for various studies. Counselor Miller.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship. Yeah, this came out of the finance committee meeting we're talking about. It'd be nice to see how much we're paying for consultants. And also, there's one year, two studies. So it'd be nice to list them every year so we kind of know what we did, and especially when people were there. So I would like to make the motion that council directs staff to provide a summary of the consultant fees for 2023, as well as the list of studies. That was part of the conversation. Thanks.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. Kathy, can you read the motion?
Through you, your worship. The motion was moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Donovan, that council directs staff to provide a summary of consultant fees for the 2023 year.
And next studies.
On the question, please vote. Deputy Mayor? Motion carried seven zero. Item nine C, correspondence from Counselor Kirk Miller, signage in Quispamsis, the St. John region, always moving forward. Counselor Miller.
Thank you, your worship. First, I'd like to say I'm not against St. John. But when I look at these signs, it says St. John, looking forward. You have to get really, really close to say region. Now, if the duplex was a regional facility, I'd be bang on with it. But I don't, I drove around Rossay, I didn't see those signs in Rossay. I don't know if they're anywhere else. I know it's great to be a good neighbor, but when I walk into the town hall of Quispamsis, I'd rather see a Quispamsis, there is no other emblem versus seeing the St. John. So I'm going to So I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we remo- we remove, we remove these signs from all Quispam Sis public u- public buildings with the exception if they become a regional facility.
With the exception of what?
If it's a regional facility, it can stay, which we don't have.
It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by- Or I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at your mic. Okay, thank you, Counselor Miller. It's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by, Counselor Donovan, are you seconding that? On the question. Acting CAO, Aaron Kennedy.
Thank you very much, your worship. Uh, I think we need to get to an apples-to-apples comparison here when we're talking about Envision. Envision, of course, is the regional growth agency. Uh, the town of Quispam Sis entered into an agreement, um, when former Discover Saint John, Develop Saint John, and Enterprise Saint John were merged a few years ago. And Hampton, Rossay, Grand Bay Westfield, Saint John, and Quispam Sis, um, openly, um, agreed to become part of the region. Um, Envision is, I wouldn't say they're our neighbors, they are, they are our partners. Um, since local governance reform, um, Envision and their mandate of economic development and tourism promotion falls within the FRSC. But Envision is in no way, absolutely no way, connected to the regional facilities. Um, Envision is a tremendous partner with the town of Quispam Sis uh, in terms of our sports tourism initiatives. Um, looking back throughout the, the journey that we've traveled with Hockey New Brunswick and Hockey Canada, uh, Envision and its predecessor, Discover Saint John, has been with us every step of the way. Um, not only in terms of their human resources and helping us pretty up bid submissions, um, but also with financial resources. Um, they contributed to the Para Hockey Cup last year, and they are contributing four times that amount toward, uh, the National U- eighteen Female Championship that's coming to Quispam Sis in November. So I would say, um, that this sends the wrong message to regional partners. Um, someone who supports us, someone that we willingly entered into an agreement with a few years ago. And it would be the recommendation of staff that this motion, your worship, be defeated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. On the question, Counselor Luck, please.
Uh, thank you, worship. I just have a few thoughts on it. Um, I think it's wonderful that we are partners with Envision, and I do agree with the acting CAO in regards to them being a tremendous partner. So I guess, in terms of this motion, I, you know, again, I struggle because I do think it's wonderful that we're part of Envision. But I think from a marketing perspective, having a sign that says Saint John region, um, it is a bit of a, yeah, I just don't think it's the best marketing for our beautiful town. Um, and I think that, you know, in terms of being worried about sending a message, maybe the message it will send is that the marketing strategy that Envision uses for the Saint John region needs to be a bit more inclusive. Because I think the Saint John region doesn't capture, I guess, our own uniqueness. And I know it's kind of hard to, but I think at the same time, I think we are still our own entity and we are a beautiful town with our own logo. And I think if I was going to, or my preference is if I'm going to see a logo on one of our municipally-owned buildings that have been paid for by Quispam Sis residents, I would like to see something around Quispam Sis, there is no other. Without, you know, saying that Envision isn't a great partner and that we're, they are doing wonderful things to help promote the region. I think, again, in terms of local marketing on our own municipal buildings, um, I would have to agree with Counselor Miller. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Counselor Bigger, please.
Well, it's, it's Counselor Miller through Counselor Bigger. That's okay. Okay, he'll go right after me. So, um, I have nothing against Envision. I think they're great, and I don't, I have nothing at all of that. The, the issue is with the sign. So if you look at the sign, Saint John is big, moving forward is big, region is like at about a tenth of the font. You'd have to walk up there. So if you want to put appropriate signs on, and it's Saint John region, it should have Quispam Sis, Rossay, Grand Bay Westfield. So the sign itself is wrong, especially when you walk into the town of Quispam Sis and the first sign you see is Saint John. And you got to look really close for the region. So it has nothing against Envision, love them, we voted for them, but this is, this is the wrong signage. Um, and I would ask just the question, is any, is it anywhere in Rossay? I don't think so. I asked a few counselors, they had no idea. Um, I just think the sign is not correct. If they want to fix the sign, great, but I think it should be removed. Thanks.
Uh, Counselor Thompson, please.
Thank you, worship. Um, I, I agree with Counselor Miller. Um, the sign, it, it truly is, when I first walked in and saw it, all I saw was Saint John, always moving forward. And I, I still don't see Envision anywhere on there, um, which i- it isn't there. So if I was not aware, and I come in, all I'm gonna see is Saint John region. That's why on Facebook I see people saying that we are the city of Saint John. People that live in Quispam Sis think this is the city of Saint John. But I, I don't believe that that, those signs don't do anything for Quispam Sis. All it is, is promoting, well, to me, Saint John, always moving forward. That's not our logo, and there's nowhere in there that says Envision. So it's a, it's a sort of a, a-
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, your worship. This isn't Counselor Miller, it really is me. I think if it exists, if these signs, I, I'm, I'm, uh, in, I will vote to defeat this motion. Um, I think if those signs are present in Quispam Sis and not, uh, I, I have no idea if they're in any other community. All I know is that we made a commitment to be a good partner with the regional development, uh, organization, Envision Saint John. And so I'm perfectly fine with those signs being in our community. Uh, perhaps there's an argument to be made about it being on the front door of our town hall, maybe that's an issue. But I don't think that one has anything to do with the other. The broader question of, are these signs designed right? We had Envision come before us and present these visuals a long time ago, and we approved it. As a council, as I recall, I stand to be corrected, but those visuals were put before us. The reality that the, um, uh, when you shrink it down to place it on as a decal, that's about, you know, uh, six or seven inches maybe in diameter, um, uh, in, uh, on the front door of somewhere or wherever, yeah, I mean, that's right, you're right. Because the actual language, the actual words are in the top sort of corner of the actual thing, and as a result, it's, it's very small. My, um, uh, I used to work for a minister who said to me that we tend to judge ourselves by our intentions and other people by their actions. And I don't think anybody's intending to leave our commu- I don't feel that anyone's intending to leave our community out. Having attended the breakfast event where Envision gave us an update on their goals for twenty-four and twenty-five, I felt mightily included as a community, and I felt a great sense of teamwork there as staff person after staff person from Envision got up to share the, the vision that they had for their various departments, whether it was welcoming newcomers, general marketing overall, you know, uh, population growth, uh, and, uh, strategic partnerships, whatever. I felt that Andrew Beckett and his team did a marvelous job, uh, creating a sense of, of, of team. And I think that we're, my opinion is we're being very short-sighted and a little bit persnickety about something that in the grand scheme of things doesn't really amount to very much. And I think that if we're a better partner than another community, good for us. If they don't have, if these don't, if they don't have anything up related to Envision, as far as I'm concerned, they're not really fulfilling the mandate that they have as a good partner with Envision. So I'll be voting to defeat this motion.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Uh, Counselor Luck, please.
Uh, thank you, worship. Um, I, I do remember, um, kind of the meeting that Doctor, Doctor, Counselor Bigger, um, alluded to. But the one-
Give me time.
The one thing that, you know, and I, and I, and I agree that that was one of the many things, but I think in that presentation, there was also some individual Quispam Sis, um, marketing. And I think that a lot of the Envision marketing has been bang on and very, you know, kind of holistic and, you know, it, it really promoted the team. I guess the one question I have is, we're the Fundy Region Service Commission, so I'm not sure why we're not using the Fundy Region, Always Moving Forward, versus the Saint John region. I know it's a different organization, but I'm, again, in terms of it being, you know, again, in terms of marketing, I just feel that would be more inclusive than the Saint John region. Um, so anyway, you know, again, it's, it's one marketing piece that I think isn't overly effective in our own town. Um, and I think that they are doing a great job, and I wouldn't want us saying that we don't want signs in certain spots um, to reflect that we're not a collaborative partner, but we also are an independent town at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Mr. Kennedy, please.
Thank you, your worship. I can't say for sure, but I would be shocked if those signs are not in other municipalities other than Quispam Sis. That would be fairly easy to find out tomorrow. But I would be shocked if that's not, uh, simply because the regional municipalities came together willingly as eager partners with Envision, um, to promote economic development and tourism. That is their branding. It's a very small part of it. Um, but it is the Saint John region, Always Moving Forward, and as Counselor Bigger suggested, those presentations have been made, uh, to council in the past. So if there are concerns, um, with the branding initiatives of, um, Envision, and again, remember last year with Tomato Tomato, it was, uh, the city and the towns by the bay. We were very much a part of that. Uh, Counselor Bigger, um, remarked on the breakfast a couple of weeks ago. There was one full-page slide, uh, talking about the Hockey Canada events that we had in Quispam Sis with a picture of, uh, the Canadian Para Hockey team, and just the way the picture was taken, Qplex was said, uh, right over the top of one of the players in the background. So you couldn't have asked for better marketing. Um, so if there are concerns, perhaps send a letter to Mr. Beckett and say that, um, you know, we, we're not really thrilled with this. But really, a motion to basically tear those signs off of our buildings tomorrow, I think sends a horrible message, um, to our regional partners. Uh, and they are, as I've said, an extremely valuable partner with the town of Quispam Sis in our sport tourism endeavors. And I don't think, um, there's any reason to, to try to jeopardize something like that. It's just, as Counselor Bigger said, it's just not being a good partner, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, Counselor Donovan, please.
Thank you. Um, I mean, opinions, everybody has them, so I, I, it's one of those things. But I also just, I'm not a super big fan of Saint John on all of our buildings either. I think it's a bit strange. I understand the context behind it and everything like that. And I'm, I'm certainly appreciative of Envision Saint John. Maybe if it said Envision Saint John, it would be a different conversation, but it doesn't, it says Saint John. Um, so I, it's in saying that I will be voting in favor of Counselor Miller's motion. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. Uh, Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Um, thank you, your worship. I, I take, um, Mr. Kennedy's words, um, to heart as to, you know, our partnership with Envision and where we've been and where we're going. And I think, um, his comments are something that we need to heed. Um, I would like to entertain, um, a motion that we, um, and I know there's a motion on the floor, but I would be willing to put a motion forward that we write to Envision, let them know our concerns, let them know maybe perhaps there is other marketing that we can, uh, explore. I, I think the first time we saw it was, um, towns by the bay, and that really was cute. Like, we liked it. We thought that was really, that sort of summed up what we were like. And, um, I think we were caught by surprise when we saw the decals on the buildings. So, um, if, um, anyway, I know there is a motion on the floor. If you'd like to amend the motion, that we could speak to, um, Envision first because they are a strategic partner and see if we can work this out.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, your worship. I'd just like to say that, uh, I'll be supporting the CAO's, acting CAO's recommendation. I'm gonna be voting against the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Counselor Luck, please.
Uh, thank you, worship. I guess, I mean, I really like the idea of before we rip them off the buildings, um, is to potentially go to Envision, you know, I, I do appreciate, uh, the CEO's, um, input. And again, we don't want to be seen as not, um, you know, a good teammate. But I guess at the same time, I would be very willing to vote in favor of the current motion if there is no action taken by our letter asking them to potentially modify their marketing so that it is more inclusive somehow. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Counselor Olson. No?
Sorry, sorry.
Okay. I'm going to remove myself from the chair. Deputy Mayor, I find it really disturbing, quite honestly, that with the many years that I have on council, the work that we have done in order to build the spirit of this region, that it could be struck down with one motion. Working with, uh, the Regional Service Commission, where I chaired for the past year, the hard work that we went through, that we toiled in order to draw together the region, which we have successfully done, there is no one who is a holdout in that. We saw these, um, signs and signatures by Envision Saint John. Envision Saint John, the region is one element of the entire region. It's, it's one of our, uh, elements or initiatives that we use in order to provide better for our community. And as the CAO has so accurately described, they have brought so much to the town of Quispam Sis that it goes beyond a sign on the door. There's a sign on the highway with, uh, with a, a ship on it, always moving forward. That's the key message there, is moving forward. We don't want to destroy the efforts that we have put forward, and that's what we're doing. It's destructive action when you take and, and pull something off of your wall because you disagree with it. If you disagree with someone, with something, then just describe that and, and, and write a letter and express your concern. There may be a good reason why it is designated the way that it is. But just to say, "I don't like it, it's, it's advertising Saint John," so what? Saint John is the nucleus of this region. And we have to recognize that. We are a community, we are an entity within ourselves, and we are strong. And so to have a sign on the door, uh, and to have councils decide that, uh, that they would want to take that off, that is destroying a whole lot of hard work that I have witnessed over the past probably three years now that we've been working on the, um, on the idea of reform and regional, uh, strategies. So I'll take the seat back, uh, Deputy Mayor, but, uh, you know, the fact that Envision exists under the Regional Services Commission was legislated. We had to have an economic development driver, and they have agreed to that. And we paid freely, we, without any kind of coercion, or, and wasn't mandated, but we paid into economic development for many years, and we did benefit by that. So, uh, I would certainly, and I don't, and I want it known that I do not support this motion. Thank you. Counselor Bigger, or is that Counselor Miller?
It's me again, I'm live. Uh, thank you, worship. I just would, uh, add as well that, um, I don't, I wouldn't relish being the one char- Thank you. Hey, look at you, yeah. I thought it was like go toward the light there for a second, maybe it was the end. Uh, I wouldn't relish being given the task of somehow figuring out how to write Envision and say, "Hey, we're gainful partners with you, but by the way, we hate your signs on our doors." So I take, um, I take the deputy mayor's point about perhaps there's some way we could express some uncertainty we have about the way that the marketing is presented. But I don't, I don't really see, like, do we, are we expecting Envision to change the measure of their entire marketing plan based on some complaint letter we would send them? Like, to me, we're either in or we're not. And I, as the mayor points out, it's, it's legislated, and so it's- And I, as the mayor points out, it's legislated, and so it's not exactly, it can be a tough pill to swallow, I guess, maybe, because it's not something we have a lot of choice about in one sense. But I don't believe that there's any half-measure in this regard. And I think that we, and I also think, without, again, not casting aspersions on what anybody said, but I don't know if we have St. John Region signs on every municipal building in Chris Pampis, but I think it's maybe a bit of a mischaracterization to make it sound that we've plastered St. John stickers all over every building in Chris Pampis. I mean, I don't think that's the case at all. The only one that I actually see is the one on this front door as I go around town, but I'm sure they're out there and I've just missed them, you know, probably. But anyhow, to me, there's no half-measures with this. We're either a partner or we're not. I also just want to, I spoke with a couple of the Envision staff about some things, and I won't name any names, of course, but I was getting this wonderful sense of enthusiasm from staff that I spoke with about efforts to be made to bolster, you know, for all boats to float higher around the whole region by virtue of the work that they do, and great enthusiasm for the newly confirmed permanent CEO, Andrew Beckett. And I get the sense from him that he's very engaged with wanting to support the full region, you know, notwithstanding the sticker on our front door. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bigger, would you just turn your mic over to Counselor Miller, please?
So, I've heard everybody, and I'm willing to do a slight amendment. My only amendment would be, and it's up to the Secondar, I would like it removed from the Town Hall, and I would like then a letter to be sent regarding the other signs and stating that it needs to be more appropriate for regional and not just have St. John and the word "region" tidies, but I think it should not be on our front door. What should be on our front door is a Chris Pampis emblem that says, "Chris Pampis, there is no other." That should be on our front door, not "St. John Moving Forward," then when you've got to get about, it depends, I don't have my glasses on, I'll have to get about three feet away to see that it's region. So I will make the amendment, if it's okay with the Secondar, that it be removed from the Town Hall. If we're allowed to do that, maybe I'm not allowed to do that. If not, then I'll keep it as is and remove it from everything, and we can send a letter after. So I'll leave it as is then. Looks like there's a procedural issue.
Thank you. After a motion is presented by the presiding officer, thank you. It shall be deemed to be in possession of council, and if a member wishes to withdraw a motion, they must ask for the unanimous permission of council. If there is no argument, a vote, if there's no agreement, I'm sorry, a vote is taken. So you want to change your motion?
So that if everybody's amenable, I will withdraw it and resubmit it as I stated. If they're not, then we'll just vote on it right now, so.
Counselor Donovan, are you in agreement? Counselor Thompson, are you in agreement? Counsel, uh, Deputy Mayor Skryer?
No.
She's not in favor?
No.
So whatever, you just match back to the same.
So the motion?
The motion stands as is.
You're voting on the motion put forth by Counselor Miller?
Well, in terms of, I know it's, you're over there because you're, but I wonder to...
What's that?
Does Mary understand that he's changed it to just remove on the Town Hall? And to write a letter to them? Does she understand that's what you're going to do? Is that what you said? No, too? Oh, no, I didn't say no. Yes, I say no. Are you agreeable to the amendment to the motion by Counselor Miller to only remove this, the sign from the St. John Town Hall and write a letter? You're not agreeable? So, okay, so the motion would stand as is then?
So the motion stands?
Remove all signs?
So, on the question? Counselor Miller?
Right. Your motion? Your favorite?
Motion defeated two to five, with those against Deputy Mayor Skryer, Counselor Olson, Counselor Bigger, Counselor Thompson, and Counselor Luck. Thank you. Item number 10, bylaws, proposed zoning bylaw amendment number 038-49 to permit accessory dwelling units in detached garages. And I'll turn to Mr. Jennifer. So we will go to our, trying to think of your title, Jennifer Jarvis, we're planning technologists. Sorry, it just got stuck up there. There you go.
Thank you, Your Worship and council. Before you is a zoning bylaw amendment requesting the removal of dwelling units from section 8G1D3. I'm sorry. We have received a number of requests from the public requesting to have dwelling units in detached garages. Currently, in an attached garage, you are permitted to have a dwelling, an accessory dwelling unit, but if it's detached, you are not permitted within the town. So that we also permit garden suites. So when we received an application for, recently, for a, an accessory building, dwelling in, sorry, a detached garage, I suggested that it be looked at as a garden suite. However, a garden suite is written as being a free independence, a freestanding building, so nothing else can be associated with that use. So I did contact legal counsel, and we're given a number of different options. One was that we could bring it forward as similar to or compatible with for a decision. We could also consider a zoning bylaw amendment specific to the location where the dwelling unit was being requested, or council could consider a broader zoning bylaw amendment that would permit this type of dwelling. So in consultation with the planning director, Stephen Stone, who works with Dillon Consulting, he suggested that we just bring forward a text amendment, so it's not specific to a property in town, but would be an amendment to the bylaw that would remove the language that precludes dwelling units in a detached garage. So the amendment that's before you is basically to remove that line so that we would be able to permit these accessory dwelling units in the detached garage. So it would continue to only be permitted two units on a lot and in residential zone, so rural would have to meet the requirements of table three, which are your lot dimensions, as well as R1. And again, you would still only be allowed a maximum number of two dwelling units, which currently already exists in the bylaw. Another thing to mention is that this is a way of increasing densities within our community in a gentle way, that it would allow dwelling units in buildings that already exist within our community, and knowing that those buildings would have to be vetted by the building inspection team and be thoroughly reviewed under the National Building Code. So it would have, the applicant would have to prove to us ultimately that that building could withstand the level of development that they were suggesting. So with that, I would like to open the floor to any questions, and if anyone has any.
Thank you, Ms. Jarvis. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm in agreement. I think, you know, when you look at across the country and our housing crisis and what people are doing, you know, that's the trend that we're seeing, is removing some of the barriers in terms of our bylaws to make it easier. So, yeah, I don't see any issue with this. I'm willing to make the first motion, but I don't know if I'm supposed to read. Do I just read what's, like, the first reading, or do I actually read the?
First reading, then second reading.
So I, but I, do I need to read, like, the amendment?
Read one of them.
Just what it says? Okay. Okay, thank you. So I'll make the motion that first reading be given to propose zoning bylaw amendment number 038-49 to permit accessory dwelling units in detached garages.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Counselor Donovan, did you second that? On the question, please vote now. Oh, on the question, sorry. Counselor Donovan seconded it, yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jarvis. I guess some people can have really large detached garages, and some people, they're smaller. And I know with the garden suites, we have a cap on how large a garden suite can be, so then we could be competing because the garden suite, I can't remember what the percentage is that they're allowed to be, so many, so many square feet, so many square feet of the original dwelling, right? And so you could have an accessory building, a garage or a detached, that is, like, people have, I've seen, like, huge. And so that would be an unfair advantage because they would be able to build a larger suite than somebody building a garden suite. So I was wondering if we've looked at that and how the challenge that that may present and how we would deal with that.
And thank you for the question and through you, Your Worship. There are provisions in our bylaw that dictate the size of a dwelling unit, so those would still be implemented in this case. So I believe that it was 65 square meters is the minimum for a story and a half unit. So staff would be looking at the configuration of the, sorry, detached garage to understand if the whole building was going to be used, if they were going to turn the whole building in, if they were just going to change a portion of it. And then we would look back and reference that section of the bylaw that says a dwelling unit has to be a certain size, if it's a, you know, one story, two story, a story and a half, et cetera. So it would need still to meet those requirements. And another thing I would like to add is that a detached garage, you're right, does have a maximum floor area of 63 square meters. So these units would only be permitted in these, in the buildings that were able to provide that's the required square meter, which would be, I believe it was 65 meters was the, was for a story and a half residence. You're right, though, someone could build a larger detached garage and have a, have a, you know, the top portion of it be a large apartment, but, and dwelling units, sorry, garden suites are limited, it's 35% or up to a maximum of 100 square meters. That, to me, is a relatively large secondary dwelling, and I would think that some of the largest detached garage areas that we approve are 60 to 80. It's not very often that I see a detached garage that's over 100 square meters. Yeah.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Bigger, please.
I'm a sidekick, I'm on the right shoulder.
Counselor Miller?
Thank you. Hi, buddy. Hi, buddy. My question is, and maybe this will come up later, but when I'm thinking of the suites on top of the garage, just a couple of things just pop in in my mind, okay? Are we going to have carbon monoxide detectors mandatory because your vehicle's underneath? Are they going to have to hook up to the water if water runs by? Do they have to hook up to the sewer? Do we have two sewer connections? Will all these things be hashed out, or you've already kind of know where we're going to get? Because if you're on top of a garage, you've got cars in there idling, so it's different than being in a house. I mean, I know some houses have the garage in, but it's a whole different thing. And then, do they have to have, if it's a unit, do they have to have a bathroom? If they have to have a bathroom, then there's a second sewer hookup. If they're close to municipal water, then they have to pay another connection charge to get into municipal water. So are those things being hashed out later, or that's kind of, you already know where we're going?
Thanks for you, Your Worship. These things are generally, would be sussed out at the time of the building code review. They would be, the building code would dictate the carbon monoxide, the building code would dictate how much weight can be suspended or held up. I mean, that's really where that would go. In terms of the second sewer count, I believe that that's automatic when a second dwelling is introduced on a lot, so that would be no different, it would be no different situation.
Just like granted suites in a house.
Exactly. It's just that the accessory building, dwelling isn't in the basement of the house, it's just over top of the garage. It would have to follow the same rules.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Counselor Donovan, please.
Thank you. I think this is an incredible idea. You know, I feel like a parrot when I keep saying, you know, the housing crisis in this region, but it is a big thing. And I think it's important for us to obviously be the solution and less of a problem when it comes to this. My, one of my concerns is, and maybe this bylaw doesn't allow for it, so I don't know. One of my issues is, I'm all for, you know, long-term rentals. If somebody wants to build a suite or whatever in their detached garage and they want to rent it out as an apartment, absolutely, 100%. Where it gets complicated in most cities in Canada and the US is people, when you introduce, you know, bylaws like this, people think, "Well, I have a garage and I can make some really quick money, and they'll turn them into Airbnbs." And that's where I am a little bit sketched out, because this, this community right now doesn't have enough housing, let alone, you know, people looking to, and no fault to these individuals, but people looking to turn a quick profit. So I don't know if there's, you know, if there's going to be guidelines in there that says, you know, maybe long-term rentals only and no short-term rentals, or, you know, what that may look like, but I definitely think it's really important.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I think this is just the start of the changes that's going to come forward from the National Building Code. And when you look at accelerated funding for housing and they put those restrictions on the development, you know that there, any questions, like, are being asked around the table right now are going to be answered, whether we agree with it or not, it'll become the law. And I know of some discussions that I had with some representatives of NFCM, they were talking three, three units in their communities, and others, they were looking at four units, you know, and what the national was promoting was four units. So for us to go to two units is just the start. And all these other things, it'll be ironed out, but if we want to get some money, we've got to get on the bandwagon and agree with the rest of the, rest of the, rest of the country, really. But yes, I totally support what you're doing.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. It's been moved by Counselor Luck, seconded by Counselor Donovan. On the question, please vote now. Counselor Miller?
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much, Ms. Jarvis. Two more motions on this one, yes. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would make the second reading, or I'd make the motion that second reading be given to propose zone bylaw amendment number 038-49 to permit accessory dwelling units in detached garages.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Luck, seconded by Counselor Bigger. On the question? Please vote now. Mary's yes as well. Motion carried seven zero. One more reading. Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would move council refer proposed zoning bylaw number zero three eight dash forty-nine to the Planning Advisory Committee for its written view, and, and set and advertise, set and advertise a public hearing date for July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Donovan. On the question? Please vote now. Motion carried seven zero. Onto number eleven, new business, nominating committee's recommendations for town committees, staff report from assistant town clerk. Counselor Olson.
Yes, I would move council accept the recommendations of the nominating committee as proposed.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Donovan. On the question? Please vote now. Yes, she's. Deputy Mayor? Deputy Mayor?
Yeah.
Motion carried seven zero. Thank you. Item number twelve, reports, have been there before you. Counselor Miller?
Buddy's here. I just have one comment for the, the committee when we talk about the town or Rosse, when they looked at the food processors. We had that here before us, and we decided to receive and file. I see that they primarily are using it for condos and apartments, which I would support that usage. If you recall, I had brought forward that we look at potentially adding apartments to compost and that, because right now they don't have any compost, but for every, to me, for every regular resident, we've got a big compost bin that goes out every second week. So if you, you know, to, to save some of your food grindings and grind them up for six or eight hours every night and get your little bag of dirt at the end, we, we got, we're already paying for that. So I do support it for apartments and condos that don't have compost, but I think that's where it should be limited to, because they don't have any other option at this time. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I, I'm looking at the report on local governance, and the new Local Governance Commission Act has been proclaimed, and there's a board. I'd like to know, it will, it says that the Local Governance Commission will review, assess, and make recommendations or rule on matters affecting the governance and administration of local governance, I guess that means, meaning municipalities, local governance structures, and regional service commissions. So my question on that is, have we had any correspondence with this new commission, and how are they going to come in and do an audit, or what do they do? I know, and so I'm wondering if we've had any correspondence with them, and exactly how this is all going to take place, and how it might change anything that we have in place.
Just that this has been, again, mandated by the government, that this is in place now, so.
But are they, have they been in touch with us, or would we?
They've been in touch. With Regional Services Commission.
With, they've been in touch with the Regional Service Commission, not with, so in, in, in here it says that local governance. Are they in touch with, with any municipalities?
I can look into that, Deputy Mayor. I can look into that.
Yeah, I'd like to know what sort of their mandate is here. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. This was another stop that I made while I was up in FCM, and got additional information. I've got a card here for municipal staff discount. Another contact person, and I was talking to the people there, and they were familiar with the Rosse efforts down here. And I, I got some, you know, documentation. And I think that based on the information staff, the staff report from our, our town clerk, who did an excellent job reporting and all that, that if we wanted to do something similar in a smaller scale, we could start that way too. And I'm sure if we contacted these people, they would even come and see us. So if we want to get it right from the horse's mugs, I think we can do that.
Okay, so this is for information only? There's no motion here, correct?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for sharing that information. And business arising from committee of the whole, renewal of legal services contracts. Counselor Bigger?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll move that council ratify its decision in committee of the whole to accept Richard McPhee's offer to renew his legal services contract for an additional year, effective immediately and expire in July twenty, July thirty-first, excuse me, two thousand twenty-five, based on the same terms and conditions as the existing agreement.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor, Deputy Mayor Schreier, I'm sorry. On the question? Counselor Miller?
Thank you, Worship. We're good now. I just want to say I support Mr. McPhee. He does a great job. I just think that we, as a town, need to look at how many times we use him. I look at the overages for the last three quarters alone, was two hundred and twenty hours, so we're averaging two hundred and sixty hours of overage every year, and I don't know if this is normal, so I'm going to be asking for some files back. So I think his terms are reasonable, I just think that we need to potentially look at this every quarter to see where we're at, because we don't have a limit on the spend. I know it's a good deal after that, but there's, I, I just think we're using him a bit too much, but I'll support the one-year continuum.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Counselor Olson, please. On the questions, been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier. Please vote now. Motion carried seven zero. Before we wrap up the evening, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize our municipality's longest-serving employee, and she's sitting right here. So after serving quite literally beside seven mayors, and she assures me that I'm her favorite, thirty-two counselors, and having attended a remarkable seven hundred and ninety-six council meetings. Catherine P. Snow is retiring this week from her position as town clerk. Tonight is her final meeting. Kathy's four decades with the town, which began in nineteen eighty-three, have been marked by unwavering commitment, dedication, leadership, but most of all, her friendship. Kathy's kind demeanor and warm presence has served her well in this role. She has an amazing ability to remain calm and professional, even in the most challenging of circumstances, which just may have occurred once or twice around this council table over the last forty years. Kathy is the preeminent authority on Quispam sis history. In fact, she literally helped to write the book on Quispam sis, a historical sketch. Thursday afternoon at three o'clock, here at the town hall, colleagues past and present will come together to share their cherished memories and express their gratitude for Kathy's lifetime of hard work and dedication to our town, the town of Quispam sis. On behalf of council, staff, and the citizens of our town, both past and present, I wish you a happy and fulfilling retirement, Kathy. Thank you for everything.
It's too late to make a speech. And it's too hot. But I'd just like to thank each and every one of you. It's, it's really been a remarkable last four decades. I've learned so much, and I've learned so much from each and every one of you, the, the old ones that have, not old, but that have been around a long time, like me, and the new ones too. And I, I wish Lisa all the best, as she continues on, and I wish the town of Quispam sis, it's somewhere stamped on me, the town of Quispam sis, but I certainly wish the town will move, continue to move forward as it has. And all the best, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Now I am looking for an adjournment. Moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Donovan. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carried unanimously. Good night, everybody. Safe travels home, stay cool. Supposed to be extremely hot over the next forty-eight hours.